accordance with section five of the open public meetings act be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in town hall mailing to the officially designated newspapers. A list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would be taking place on Monday, July 19th. At seven P M via zoom webinar. Jody Sharma.
Here.
Joy Segal.
Here.
Steve Togar.
Here.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Here.
Amy Lawrence.
Here.
Shandru Horejani.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jessica Glad.
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg.
Here. But Eileen, before we begin, I want to be sworn in because I would like to state on the record. Something about the last meeting. So I'll raise my right hand.
Mr. Steinberg, do solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're going to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. I just want to state that at the last meeting. My, as you folks know, my laptop failed. For a few minutes and I was out of the meeting for a few minutes, but I did go back. And watch the entire meeting, the last meeting we had. So I just want to put that on the record that I, it was interesting because. When I went back and looked at the tape, I saw that I really didn't miss anything. Because Rob jumped in and said, well, since Joe has a problem and it's gone, it's gone. We should take a recess and the board took a recess. So I didn't really miss any testimony. That's the first interesting thing about the, about the last meeting. The second is. What's happened to the case that I wanted to be eligible for tonight? Which we'll get to in a few minutes when we, when we get to that case. So I, I just want to say on the record, I did watch the tape. And, and, and see the entire meeting of the last meeting of this board.
Thank you.
Okay, before we begin, I just want to do something. Because I never like to embarrass people. Is there anyone in the audience? Who is here on calendar thirty eight oh four dash twenty one? Which is thirty two Great Hills Terrace. The applicant is Sherry Potash. Are those folks here yet?
The applicant is here, as well as the architect and. They're professionals.
And the professionals, is that what you said?
I'm assuming yes.
So can we have one of the professionals come forward, please?
Um, well, I'll bring the applicant because I really don't know who. I know Jonathan Bob is.
Well, we can, I can talk to her.
I brought over the applicant as well as, as Jonathan Bob, who I believe is there on. Where did he go? Well, I brought him over.
Okay, I, I see. A box for Sherry Potash. I'm not seeing anyone else at the moment. I'm not even seeing her. Ms. Potash, you're muted. Can you unmute, please? All right, Ms. Potash, you're muted. You're still muted. Can you unmute? We can't hear you. Can't hear you. Mr. Bob.
Yes, I am here.
I can hear you and I can see you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, very good.
I would just suggest, and then we're going to take your case in the normal course of the evening. I tell you, I would assume that you should look at. Section ten of the application. And I'll read you a sentence from it. It says. Property is a through lot. With out legal rear yard. That's what it says.
Okay.
It says you have no legal rear yard, or you have a swimming pool, or you want to put a swimming pool. In what is not a legal rear yard. I don't understand that. And I'm not going to ask you to clarify it now. I just want to raise it now. Because that's going to be one of the questions I will ask at the time.
Of course. Sure.
Fine. All right, let's go back to the regular course of business. I hope that all of you have with you.
Hold on, I gotta get everybody off that doesn't belong here and.
Okay.
Give me two seconds.
Take your time.
All right, we're good to go.
Okay, I hope that all of you have with you tonight. The revised agenda that was prepared by Eileen David and forwarded. I'm assuming to all members of the board. I know I received a copy. Okay, so we're now at the approval of minutes. Section of the agenda. There's one set of minutes. Of the meeting of May the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. Is there anyone on the board who would like to move to accept those minutes?
Move accepting minutes from May seventeen, twenty twenty one.
That's Wolfgang Taurus made the motion. Is there anyone who is going to second it?
I'll second the motion.
All right, the second is by Joy Segal. All in favor, raise your hands or say yes. Any opposed? I see no opposed. I hear no opposed. The minutes are accepted. Now we're going to do four memorializations tonight. And once again, my thanks to Joy Segal, who is our. Extraordinaire reviewer of resolutions. All right, is there anyone who would like to make a motion? To adopt the memorialization that was circulated, I think earlier today. In Shelbrook Group two, one fifty seven Long Hill Drive. That was the case that we dealt with, I think, two meetings ago. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Joy Segal.
Joy, you can't vote on this. Joy. Can't vote on this, yeah. Everyone else, with the exception of Shandru, can vote on it. And Steve, you were absent.
I'll, I'll make the motion then. Move approval.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I did. Jessica did.
That's a good.
Yeah, move approval, calendar thirty seven ninety seven twenty one Shelbrook Group.
Is there a second?
Second. Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Yes.
Amy Lawrence.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes. The second one memorialization is. Ralph Brunner for Brunner at seventy eight Kane Road in Short Hills. Who's eligible on this one, Eileen?
Jody, Joy, Wolfgang, Jessica, Joe, Amy.
One of those people like to make a motion to adopt the memorializing resolution. In calendar thirty seven ninety nine dash twenty one. Ralph Brunner, seventy eight Kane Road.
Well, I, I'll make a motion to the.
Once again, Joy Segal has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Amy seconds.
Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Joy Segal.
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Yes.
Amy Lawrence.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes. The next memorializing resolution is Paul Hanson at forty eight Elmwood Place. Who's eligible on this, Eileen?
Jody, Joy, Wolfgang, Jessica, Joe, Amy.
Is there a motion to approve memorializing resolution in calendar thirty eight oh three dash twenty one? Forty eight Elmwood.
I'll move to memorialize thirty eight oh three dash twenty one.
Amy Lawrence has moved to adopt the memorializing resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Jessica Glad has seconded it.
Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Joy Segal.
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Yes.
Amy Lawrence.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes. The last one we, is one we had a little fun with at the last meeting. Or I guess it was two meetings ago. It's calendar thirty eight oh five dash twenty one. Sanjay Rajan at one Washington Avenue. Who's eligible here?
Same people.
Same people. Is there a motion to adopt the memorializing resolution in that case?
Move adoption of the memorializing resolution for calendar number thirty eight zero five dash twenty one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Amy seconded it.
Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Joy Segal.
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Yes.
Amy Lawrence.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes. Now we have a. A recusal in this case, which is Ji Kang Ju at twelve Ridge Terrace. Now that's you, right, Steve? You're going to say yes.
Yes, I'm going to recuse and be asked to be put into the audience.
Okay, Ms. Ju.
I have to get find her. Well, I have two hands raised, so I'm going to bring them both over because I don't see anyone. With that name, so. People involved.
Okay, we have two people on this case. One of them is Christina Kong, correct? You're muted. Can you unmute yourself?
Hi, yeah, Christine is my wife. I'm Ji Kang Su. We are the family.
And now what is your relationship?
We are wife and husband.
The applicant is, is named Ji Kang Ju.
Yes, so I am Ji Kang Su. I'm the wife of Christine Kong. She sits next to me now.
Okay. Can you swear the witness, please?
Yes. Mr. Ju, can you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're going to be providing this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address, please.
Ji Kang Su, twelve Ridge Terrace, Short Hills.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you're saying, we're seeking one variance here. Because the shed that's in your backyard is in a nonconforming location. Tell us, tell us your story, please.
You're asking me to explain?
Yes.
Okay, yes, so it was last year and my backyard, I actually need a small shed. For in, to store my gardening tool. So I installed one at the edge of the fence. And Steve, which is on the board, he actually saw my fence and he said, you actually need to apply for a variance. Because it's very close to the fence. So I actually applied. And that's really come to this meeting and, and we actually asked.
Tell us about the location of the fence and why you have it, where you have it.
So the location is along the fence of one neighbor, which is actually not Steve himself, or the other side of the fence. And that had fence on the other side of my property is some tree, some like area. It's not, I see any activities on my.
Garage.
Yeah, and also a garage there as well. And on my side of fence, it's actually, I have a lawn and the shed is very small. So it's fitting within the fence, the end of the lawn. So it's really fitting there. So I consider that's a good place. It's the first, it's not interfere with any neighbors. It's very, very small. It's eight by ten. And secondly, it's keep the shape of the lawn, the beauty, and also, of course, the shed itself can provide some convenience of, you know, storing that my gardening tool, basically. So that's my request.
I'm sorry, you were, were you starting a sentence?
No, I just provide the reasoning and the facts.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone on the board who has a question for this witness?
I do. I just want to make sure I understood that correctly. You installed the shed one year ago?
It is about last, yeah, I mean, it's the last August or September.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone else who has a question for this witness?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
So, Mr. Ju, with regard to this shed, is there any electricity that's run to this structure?
No, that's all.
And, and what is, is there a foundation to the structure?
It is just a, like a very simple, like, very like a simple one, costs us three hundred dollars. The simplest, the one you can buy from the market. So it's just laid directly on some stone. So I've just put like, you know, a layer of on top and. To make it like leveled, then put that to shed on there. And that's just about it.
And approximately how tall is the shed?
It's about, I want to say it's about a little taller than myself. So it's like about six feet or things like that, yeah.
Six feet, you said?
Yeah.
Sorry, I do have one follow up question. Given the, the sort of foundation that you just described for this shed, is it fairly easy to move it?
It is, but although actually some like as per manufacturer's device, there's like, you can put the anchor to fasten it. Case that there's a wing. So I just installed it per that recommendation and there's two nails and the wires that go through that roof. So to secure that.
I have a question for Eileen. This is fence, this shed should be twelve feet from the property line. Is that correct?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes, Joy.
When you installed the shed, Mr. Zhao, did you know that there was a setback requirement accessory?
Yeah, so we actually applied for this. I will look at that, some searches, some internet, right? As the asking for some sort of permission. And there's, I mean, I think that there's a different rules, different terms across the state, right? I mean, our town, of course, has our own requirement. So we did apply and he was advised that there's twelve feet. Then, I mean, obviously, twelve feet is going to be pretty far from the fence, such as going to be put in the middle of the lawn, basically. So then I actually put it just on the fence because that's actually not interfere with anyone. But Steve right away actually pointed out to me that, you know, if it's not compliant with that, like a council rule. Then you can apply for a variance. And if for something that, you know, can go through, then the town.
Just to clarify, so you knew about the variance before you built it or only after it was identified to you by Steve?
It was, yeah, so I actually applied then, I think Irene pointed out, it says twelve feet.
Your application, your application was denied? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, it was actually denied. It was, I placed too close. Then I didn't realize there's a variance we can apply. Because if approved, if it was twelve feet, there's not even need approval, I guess.
Excuse me, actually, I, I do some research on.
Wait, 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 stop, 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 stop talking.
Yeah.
No more, no talking for a second. Mr. Zhao, if your wife is going to provide testimony, she needs to be sworn and she needs to be seen on the screen.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I mean, yeah, sorry about this. We don't really know this. I mean, it's.
Not a problem. Don't worry about it. So would you, would you like, would you like her to testify to answer Ms. Segal's question?
Can she actually really talk to me then? I actually expressed her or is that?
No, we want, we, we.
Isn't her, she worried about her English, actually. Sorry about this.
Well, if we can only, this board can only accept sworn testimony from someone who is on the screen. If you want to, Mr. Zhao, if you, if you want to take a second and talk privately to your wife and then, and then, you know, unmute yourself, I think that's appropriate.
Okay, well, yeah.
Just for a second, because we can't hold up the proceeding.
Okay.
Rob, if I could ask while they're considering, I have Steve Togar, who I put in the attendees, and he's got his hand raised. Is he able to participate in?
Well, he, he definitely has the right to participate and he can participate. I think at this point, though, Eileen, we're, we're still having questions from the board. And then, then the chairman will open it up to the.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ju.
Mr. Zhao, you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay, so Ms. Segal, I believe, asked the question about the origins of. How you came to the board and filed an application for a variance? Did you, so the question, I think, if I can just restate it and Joy, you'll correct me. Did you know about the need for a variance before you put the shed in? Or was it only after the shed was installed and Mr. Togar or someone else pointed it out to you?
I actually didn't know. There's, I mean, I actually never. In these type of for meeting, it's actually my first time, actually. I didn't know. And after Stephen pointed out to me, I realized I can apply for this adherence.
Anyone else have a question for this witness?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just one more question from me. You, you show on this survey that you submitted with the application from two thousand and twelve. It shows a picket fence adjacent to the shed location. First of all, is that fence still in the same location and is it a picket fence?
Yeah, this fence is in the same location, like since I moved in four years ago. So I mean, actually nine years ago, so it's the same location, yes.
And is that your fence?
The fence is my neighbor's.
Your neighbor's fence?
Yeah.
Because, because it shows that part, part of that fence from your survey is within the boundary line of your property.
Yeah, I didn't really pay much attention to that when I'm moving, but the location is, it has things there.
Thank you.
Location is what?
Location is as it was since I moved that in. So that the fence was there, since that they are moving, but.
I have another question.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Zhao, is there any other, is there any space, any place, any location on your site that the shed? Could be placed that would comply with the zoning?
It's, you know, it has to be in the middle of the lawn, right? Because twelve feet is quite a bigger distance, right? If you're looking for twelve feet across all that, you know, for size of that shed. Which means literally you only can put it in the middle of the lawn, right? So I think it's not, will be actually, you know, impact that the integrity or beauty of the house or its property. Right? Because all of a sudden, in the middle of lawn, you have a shed, right? So actually, I think it's the best, but I, a place where first not interfere any of my neighbors. And secondly, is like a location could be, you know, seeing that outside, like along itself, so it's on that.
Any other questions of this witness?
Um, yeah, I have one more. I, I understand that moving the shed maybe is, it puts it, you know, more in the middle of your yard and not ideal situation. But did we hear you correctly that you said you, before you installed the shed here, you did understand that it was supposed to be twelve feet from the fence, essentially?
Yeah, I actually did realize, so this is a very, as I said, this is a very simple, I mean, originally I was thinking by a two thousand dollar shed. Because I think it's very, because of, for this reason, I actually put that as three hundred dollar shed. So it's just going much smaller and putting some gardening tool for the winter, basically, right? And so I just put a very simple one there and, you know, in case, I mean, to be very honest about, if you ask me to remove, I would have removed. But then I realized that I actually ask, can ask for a variance as long as, you know, I don't really interfere with my neighbor if they are not against it. I mean, no one actually against it, I mean, my knowledge, right? But then if I have a proper particular being placed, there was a town's approval, right? But then, and I think it makes sense for everyone. So I think that's really the reasoning.
Okay, thank you.
And the other question to this witness. From board members, is there anyone in the audience who has any questions for this witness? This is a time for questions only. You will have an opportunity, if you're in the audience, to make a statement. But this is not the time. This is the time for questions only. Eileen, is there anyone?
No.
Ask a question?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a statement? He and she would like to make with respect to this application. Now is the time to make statements.
Steve Togar has a statement.
Steve Togur has a statement.
Steve.
Hey, hold on, yeah, mute yourself, Steve, thank you.
Yep.
Can you raise your right hand? You saw me swear from the testimony you're going to give tonight, it's the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Steve Togur, T O G H E R, 15 Burn Cliff Terrace, Short Hills, New Jersey, and I'm the backyard neighbor.
That's Steve.
So I, my comment is, I'm actually, I'd like to testify that I'm in support of this application. Notwithstanding some of the issues around the timing of the application, just putting that aside. When you look at the property, if you had a chance to visit it, it's a, it's a very unusual property. It's an L shaped property, which in my mind generates a hardship for the applicant. The very large retaining wall, which would be another place where you might consider putting the shed actually belongs to hit to the applicant's neighbor on the right. So the the shed, as the applicant said, would have to be in the middle of their yard, which makes no sense. The location where it is currently, and there is a good foundation, I remember having conversations with the applicant during, while he was putting it up and it's, it's a good solid, at least from my perspective, good solid stone foundation. And the location, again, due to the hardship of the L shaped property is in the the best place. It's according to the neighbor that it impacts the most, as the, as they said, it's behind that neighbor's garage. So that neighbor doesn't even see the shed at all. And and candidly, that the the property, the neighbor's property be behind their garage, they 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 never use it, they never go there. From my perspective, I cannot see the shed from my property. We have a, this kind of a little bit of a hill that 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 joins the two properties, so I don't see it. I think it's additive to the property overall, it's nice to have a shed. And so, given the hardship of the shape of the property and the fact that be in compliance would mean cutting off a substantial portion of his yard, which is seems unreasonable. Also, you'll, you'll remember that it's on a very big hill, right? So a lot of his property is on a steep slope. And so there's, there's a relatively small portion of the backyard that's actually flat. And I think the applicant, you know, picked the, really the best place for the, for the shed, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have a statement he or she would like to make? Excuse me, with respect to this case? Eileen, is there anyone else out there? Board members? Not including Steve Togur.
Well, so why don't, why don't we, why don't we remove Steve, I'm sorry, from the, from the gallery, please? Thank you.
Okay. Board members, questions, comments? I will make one comment, yes, Wolfgang.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that having visited the property and understanding that there are some timing issues regarding the function of this, of this shed, it still seems to me that, given the shape of the lot and the physical conditions, that it's, it seems to be a pretty logical place for the shed. You know, having a 12 foot setback, that basically placing in the middle of the yard just doesn't seem, that doesn't make any common sense. It seems like a logical place for a yard like that, you know, having a shed in a house like that is very typical, you know, for houses of that nature. And I think it's, I think it's a benefit overall.
I will just make one comment, and that is that my recollection, and it's been a while since I was at the property, is that this, this shed is not directly behind the neighbor's garage. Not to my eye, it wasn't. But I agree with Wolfgang to impose and on this property, the literal requirement of the ordinance would put the fence pretty much in the middle of their property, which is kind of a T. There's a portion of the property that comes in from the street. And then there's another portion of the property that forms kind of a T in the back. And I think that the shed is pretty obscure. It didn't stand out in my mind when I saw it. But I do want the record to indicate that my recollection at least was that it was not directly behind the driveway. More in the area of the, I'm sorry, it was not directly behind the garage, was more in the area of the driveway. Anyone else? Yes, Wolfgang.
To that point, because I'm looking at my notes for having been there, and I remember that it is, it's more kitty corner to the garage than directly behind it, it's more kitty corner, but the the area of the of the lot that's right behind it is a landscaped, it's like it has trees and landscaping. So it's not, so to speak, an actively used part of the yard and isn't something that would so that that should, the presence of that should would not obstruct or interfere with anything that would be going on in that area of the yard.
Anyone else have anything to say about this case? Yes.
Okay. No, I was just gonna say super quick that I I'm a little bit troubled by, I guess, the fact that the applicant understood the requirement and and installed the shed anyhow, but but notwithstanding, I I do agree with you and Wolfgang that the shape and of the property warrants and sort of what's surrounding it, that it makes it a logical location. And I'll just add that, given that the neighbors don't seem to have issued, in fact, one spoke in support of this, that that I would be supportive of it.
Is there a motion in this case?
Yeah, I I guess, given that, I will make the motion to to approve this fair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joey Segal?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Sanju Horejani?
Yes.
Jessica Wyatt?
Yes.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes. The application is approved and the variance for the shed is granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the next case on the agenda is the Wolf matter. Now, I think all of you are familiar with the fact that the board excuse me, the board has received a letter from the Wilson's attorney in which they indicate, he indicates in his letter, which of course binds his client that all other app, all other requests that were originally in the application have been withdrawn. Is that correct, sir?
So, Mr. Chairman, I I was being promoted, so I didn't hear part of what you said, but I think I know what you said. We have, in fact, agreed to withdraw all of the relief that's necessary, with the exception of the relief that the board has already granted, which is the combined side yard setback. So we'll comply with the front yard setback, we'll comply with the coverage requirements in your ordinance. And so the only thing we're relying upon is the combined side yard setback that the board has already reviewed, analyzed, voted on and approved.
Joe, Joe, let let the record show that Steve Togur rejoined the meeting prior to your beginning conversation on this case, please.
Also, I'm I'm recused from this matter, so I should probably be.
Yeah, so well, yeah, we haven't really formally, I guess, other than Mr. Forchner has has made an appearance on behalf of his client. We haven't formally, I guess, opened the case, so to speak. I think we're just talking about some, some preliminary procedural matters, but that is correct. So Ms. Glatt needs to leave the room and Mr. Togur needs to be acknowledged as returning to the room.
Yes.
Ms. Glatt is gone now. Eileen, she's part of the audience, is that correct?
Yes.
And Steve Togur has come back.
Yes.
Into the room, right, we're going to open the case formally now. Now, the attorney should make his statement again.
So wait, let's, let's, let's first introduce ourselves and who we're representing, et cetera.
So for the record, Gary Forchner here on behalf of Jason and Corey Wilf. I appeared before you at the last hearing, I guess this is the third hearing, so I was at the last hearing. And we've submitted a letter, if you're ready for me to proceed, I will, if you want to take care of any other procedural matter before I do, by all means. So I submitted a letter to the board on July 8th of this year. After the last hearing, we heard the comments from the board, we certainly understood your sentiments. And so what we've done is we are, we withdrawn the request for all of the relief, with the exception of the combined side yard setback. You recall, in order to be able to expand the garage, we needed the combined side yard setback because of a piece on the opposite side of the property where the property line narrowed. We have reduced that and I don't want to confuse you, because Mr. Simon pointed out, my letter can potentially be a little bit confusing. The, what we have eliminated.
Wait, Mr. Forchner, hold on a second, just, just two things. First of all, when you're talking about your letter, you're talking about your letter to the board dated July 8th, 2021?
Correct.
And 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 do you want to maybe mark that just because of the circumstances surrounding the case?
Um, most certainly, you're welcome to mark it, I don't know whether you.
I think we're up to, Mr. Chairman, I think we're up to A7.
I think that's correct.
And and perhaps, Mr. Simon, we should mark the the variant, the revised variance plan and the revised architectural plans, just so the record is complete.
Right, well, let's, let's first start with the letter, because that's, that's what you were teeing up, so let's talk about that first.
Okay, so what I did in the letter, or hopefully accomplished in the letter, was explained what we're doing at this point. And again, as Mr. Simon points out, there's a piece of it that may have been confusing while technically correct. We are reducing the length of the garage. So you recall that before we had an intrusion into the front yard setback in order to have three usable bays and there'd be a little small additional piece for storage and it retained the existing structure. What we have done is we're reducing the width of the garage, it'll be nothing more than the three usable bays. And it will comport with the front yard setback requirement. So given the fact that we're shortening it, it technically reduces the scope of the variance, but it needs the full width of the combined side yard setback. And hopefully, that's a little bit clearer, although I'm not convinced that I've made it any clearer than it was before. So, Mr. Simon, feel free to jump in, but the short answer is, we'll be fully compliant with the front yard setback. And we will certainly look to rely upon the combined side yard setback that the board previously produced, approved. And we are eliminating the relief for the coverage that we'd previously requested, actually building coverage to be precisely previously requested. So the only improvement that's before the board is the garage addition. And as I said, we're staying within the front yard setback requirements that had, that apply to this application. And so the only thing that we're relying upon is the combined side yard setback that the board previously granted. Everything else has been removed from this application, because all of the work that they can do can be done in a conforming manner. So we don't need to be before the board for those items.
And when you say that all work can be done in a conforming matter, does that mean that all the additions that were shown on the original plan to the house itself are going to be eliminated?
So not eliminating all of them, what they do intend to do is still modify the pool, have some pool house. But it will comport with your ordinance requirements with regard to coverage and whatnot. So, given the fact, if we came in and didn't require any variance relief, we would just go to the zoning officer and ask for the approval and obviously get construction permits. For anything else that we're going to do, we're still going to utilize that process. But because we've taken all the other variances off the table, we don't need to ask the board for permission to do all of those. All of those will be fully compliant with your ordinance requirements.
And and Mr. Chairman, I had suggested to Mr. Forchner that in lieu of what he had described to me as his letter, which became the letter of July 8th, 2021, marked as A7, that he submit revised plans just demonstrating that no further variance relief was was required in connection with the application. And so, Mr. Forchner, you may want to, just so the record's clear, maybe mark them as as additional exhibits, just so the board is aware that, in fact, there's no additional relief that is required of the board at this time. They had voted to approve unanimously the combined side yard and there's no other relief that's before the board at this point.
And and if you like, I'll be happy to share my screen with those plans that have been previously.
I would like you to do that.
Okay, bear with me one second. Okay, I trust you're seeing the screen?
So, so.
We did for a moment now, yes, we're seeing it now.
Okay, so can you please describe, Mr. Forchner, what we're looking at the screen? And also, please clarify for the board members how what we're looking on the screen, looking at on the screen relates to what was recently submitted?
Okay, so what we're showing now shows the only relief that is necessary before the board. You'll see this one section here in blue.
Wait, 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 before you refer to this plan, why don't we mark it? And you identify, I I know you're not an engineer, but this is just for clarification purposes for the board.
Understood, and I I will identify the plans which have previously been submitted so as to provide some clarity to to the board, or hopefully provide some clarity to the board. So what we're looking at is, this is a plan prepared by the engineer, Richard Keller. And it is dated, where's my date, 7/1/2021? Well, actually, pardon me, it was same plane you had before, but it was revised through July 8th, 2021. So if you would, let me just show you what's on this plan, so hopefully we have some clarity. So first of all, all of the improvements, with the exception of this small blue addition to the garage, are already existing. None of those obviously require relief whatsoever. You recall that previously we'd extended the garage out beyond the setback line, this blue line being the setback line. So what they're going to do with regard to the garage is they have, they're going to meet or or either meet or be less than the setback line. You recall that with regard to the combined yard setback, which we still need, because the property narrows at this point towards the top of the page, we were a few feet short with regard to the combined yard setback. So in order to do this addition within, it it further extends what previously had been within the combined side yard. And so that continues to require relief. And as Mr. Simon pointed out, the board unanimously granted that combined yard, side yard variance for that. We have eliminated the piece that was in the front yard that the board did not approve. And everything else has been removed from the plan, including the 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 pool house, the pool and other, all the other interim improvements, because again, those do not require any relief. It's not clear 100% what, which of those the the applicant shall proceed with. But the only thing requiring relief and the only thing we're asking for is to to acknowledge the combined side yard setback variance that the board previously granted, so that we can do the small garage addition.
And Mr. Forchner, we're gonna, we're gonna consider this as marked as exhibit A8, which would be the variance plan updated as of July 8th, 2021.
And if you would like me to share and show the architectural plans, I can do that as well.
That's up to the board.
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay. And and for the record, the architect, revised architectural plans consistent with this have been submitted in advance of the hearing.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is that you're not. is that you're not asking the board for any additional relief.
Correct.
Well, it's been nice having you here. And good luck to you and to your clients.
I, I appreciate that. We'll look forward to the resolution as to the combined side yard setback and shall proceed accordingly. And unless there's any other questions or comments, I will proceed to the rest of my evening plans.
That's a good idea.
Just please to stop sharing your screen, please.
I shall do so. Again, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. The next matter on the agenda is 12 Randall Drive. Now, we had one party recused in this case, but that party is missing tonight from the meeting anyway. So.
Oh, I think it's, I think it's 19 Randall Drive.
It's.
But, 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 yeah, 19.
No, it's 19.
Sorry.
And this is calendar 3792-21. Who are the witnesses? Who are the applicant here?
I have the applicant and I will rely on him to tell me if there's anyone in the gallery I need to bring.
Yeah, my, my name is Scott Dorfman. I'm the owner and James Forrest is my attorney. He's going to speak about this. He's in the audience.
And I'm also bringing Jessica Glad back.
Let's bring Jessica, your back for this case. Are there any questions of this witness?
And do I have?
I don't see any or hear any. Mr. First.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you. I was retained by Mr. Dorfman to present this case to him. I apologize. I'm in an alternate location from my regular office. So it's a little blurry down here. Mr. Chairman, this application was submitted in May by Mr. Dorfman personally. After watching some of the board meetings, he decided on a few things. One, he made a change to one of his professionals instead of, he had switched to Baumann Engineering. And in addition to that, he decided to retain counsel. I was recently retained. So I do not have a formal letter of representation before the board, but Mr. Dorfman certainly can confirm that I am his attorney at this point. Mr. Chairman, the application is for the rehabilitation of a home at 19 Randall Drive. For anyone who has driven by this property, will see that this property is in less than pristine condition. Mr. Dorfman's plans are to rehabilitate the property and he's hoping to install a pool. The application was presented with five variances. Three of those were existing non-conformings. Two of those were new variances. Both the new variances will be related to the pool. In consultation with his new professionals, the coverage variance is actually going away. So the sheets one through three that you have from Baumann do not show the fifth variance, but the handwritten application that Mr. Dorfman submitted in May would note that fifth variance. But as we sit here before the board today, the pool plan was changed. Much of the concrete or asphalt that was pre-existing had been removed. We have now what we'll refer to as a Hampton's pool, which is a smaller border surrounded by lawn. So that reduced from five to four variances. I think that's a fair overview for the board in terms of understanding what is to be presented. We do have two witnesses this evening. The first would be Nikki Low Lotus. I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Nikki, if we could let her in. And then the second would be Mark Marion, our architect. If we could likewise let him in, and then I will present them for testimony. Mr. Dorfman is here. He is available for questions. But for purposes of brevity and the board's time, I didn't feel it appropriate to spend any time with him unless the board had questions of him, in which case we will make him available.
Let's hear the first witness.
The first witness, Mr. Chairman, would be Nikki Low Lotus, the civil engineer.
Good evening, everyone. And yes, Lou Lotus is the correct pronunciation.
Thanks. Glad I got it right.
You got it.
Can you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're going to give tonight, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Nikki Lou Lotus. That's L O U, L O U D I S. And my office address is 54 Horse Hill Road, Cedar Knolls, New Jersey. I'm with Bowman Consulting.
Nikki, would you please give us the benefit of your qualification so I can have you qualified as an expert, please?
Certainly. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology. I've been a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since 1993. And I've appeared before numerous boards in Bergen, 100 and Morris Counties.
Have you ever appeared before the Millburn Board of Adjustment?
I have not.
Well, welcome. Hopefully, Mr. Steinberg will allow you to testify today.
Thank you.
I put forth Ms. Low Lotus as a civil engineer, Mr. Chairman.
Is your, is your license currently in good standing in New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
As far as I'm concerned, she can be admitted as a engineer.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Lotus, if you would be kind enough to share your screen and put up your plans, which were previously submitted to the board. So there's no need to mark them unless Mr. Simon disagrees.
I have a few site photos that I wanted to share, some pictures that both I and the applicant have taken, which were not previously submitted. Can we?
So let's put those up, Nikki, and then we'll mark those, we'll, we'll mark them and then you'll describe what they are. And we'll see if we have sufficient information to be able to put those before the board.
Okay. Are you able to see this picture?
Here.
Okay. I guess I should give you just a brief overview of the site. This is 19.
So can I interrupt for a second? I apologize.
Yes.
Are you showing, I mean, I see on the bottom of my screen a series of five photographs. Is that what you intend to introduce as exhibits?
That's correct.
Do you want to introduce them as five separate exhibits, A1 through A5, or A1 consisting of five sheets?
I think we do A1 consisting of five sheets. This will be, this will be quick. And just to give an idea of what we have. Actually, let me do this. Let me give you my aerial. Let's start off with this. This probably should be A1.
All right. So this, is this, is this not part of your five photo set?
That is correct.
All right. So wait, so this is your first. Okay. So A1, A1, which has not been supplied to the board yet, correct?
Correct.
Entitled existing aerial.
Existing aerial prepared by Bowman and dated July 16th, 2021. And then I have a proposed drawing, which is, should be A2. If that's okay with you, concept plan rendering. Also dated July 16th, 2021 and prepared by Bowman.
Where's that? We don't see that yet.
Right here.
There you go.
And then I have the five site photos.
And that'll be A3.
A3.
All right. So why don't you start with, why don't you start with A1, please?
Okay. Of course. So the application before you this evening, as counsel just stated, is for the rehabilitation of an existing two and a half story, single family residence located at 19 Randall Drive. This is block 3702, lot two. And the house is located in the R4 residential district per the township zoning map. It is surrounded by other residential homes. You have an R3 zone and R5 zone nearby. Generally, this is all a residential area. The building, the house, as you see it now, is about 30, sorry, 7,400 square feet in size. A little bit hard to see, but there is an existing concrete stairway that comes to the front of the house currently. There is a driveway to the right of the house, which extends up and behind the house where you have a three car garage that is entered from the rear. The house currently has a sunroom and then an old stone paver patio. As counsel also stated, the house is not in the most pristine condition, but the applicant has some good plans to, to renovate that. Now, just if I can go to A3 to show you some of these.
If I could ask you a question, if you can just back out on this one, just enlarge it.
Sure.
Now, in reviewing the neighborhood, you familiarize yourself with the homes in the neighborhood, correct?
Yes, I've driven around.
And there are, and there are seven houses on the one block of Randall Drive. Is that correct? Seven that front onto Randall?
That is correct.
And is it your understanding that of those seven homes, four of them have existing pools?
Yes.
Thank you.
So just to give you.
If you tell us which four.
I don't know the numbers. You have this house here, I believe is 23. The one right next to it, the three bottom ones, basically. And then the fourth one is not showing up in this picture, Mr. Forrest.
It's down, it's down the street. If you're looking at the photo, it's, it's to the left, correct?
It's further to the left. Yes.
On the same side of the street as Mr. Dorfman's home on the corner?
Do you mean this house here?
No, it'd be the other way. It's okay. If you're not familiar, that's fine. You know, there's.
The house at the end, no.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so if I can just go through some of the pictures, just to give you the idea. This, we're going to A3 now. This is the back of the house. As you come up the driveway, the driveway is to your right.
Take these photos?
Yes, I did, as well as the applicant.
Do you know the date that these photos were taken?
These photos, this was taken last Monday. There's one photo that was taken today.
What's, what's the date, please? Or approximate date?
July 12.
Thank you.
And these are an accurate representation of the manner in which the property looks today?
Yes, correct. I drove by the site today and this is, this is still what it looks like. So this is the rear of the house. We have a second picture here, which is standing from that top of the driveway, looking in plan view, looking to the left, you see the stone patio, the sunroom and what's there, you know, in terms of landscaping and lawn. The third picture is the front of the house as it looks today. As you can see, there was some construction that took place, which, you know, due to COVID, the work was stopped. I believe the applicant has permits for some interior work. I'm not familiar with the actual nature of the permits, but there was some work being done. Here's another picture of the sunroom in the back of the house. And then this is the garage. This picture was taken today. So in terms of the renovations that are being proposed, I'll go to the concept plan rendering, which we had marked as A2.
Nikki, before we go to that, I would like you, if you would, please describe the size of the lot, the layout of the lot, the depth and those types of things, please.
So the size of the lot is 24,652 square feet. It is 207.76 feet wide, 119.2 feet deep.
Now, the zone requires a minimum 150 foot depth for a property in this zone. Is that correct?
Correct. This is a non-conforming, existing, non-conforming situation and it remains unchanged.
And it also appears, and I haven't been in geometry class in quite some time, so I'm not sure what this would be, but this certainly isn't a square or rectangle. There's a little bit of an angle in the rear yard. So we don't have a nice clean line across the rear. Is that correct as well?
That is correct. Yes.
And it looks like as if it's almost a little bit of a pie as well, right?
Yes.
And that's unique to this lot? There's no other lots in the neighborhood that are similar to that?
Um, without having gone further into the neighborhood, I couldn't say for sure, but this is certainly, you know, not as normal.
Okay. And when, when we go to A1, we'll show the, we'll show the board the neighborhood and that there's no really, there's no real lot pattern available. So we'll make sure we come back to that.
You want me to go back to that now?
Uh, well, I don't think you put A1 up yet of your, of your set. Did you? So I don't want you to.
That's the aerial.
No, I meant your, I meant your site plan is what I was talking.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
So don't, just keep going where you're going. Well, I'll, I'll fill in the blanks as we need.
Okay. So the proposed renovations to this site are we are going to be removing the pavement in the rear and convert that to a Hampton style pool, which will basically have more pervious areas, more grass areas than previously shown. We're going to line the rear property line with green giant arboretum. Now, the site plan, which you do have, shows 10 arboretum lining up this portion, approximately half of the rear property line. But the property owner has agreed to add additional plantings along the back and along the side yard portion, which comes up to his driveway. We will be removing the old stone patio in the back. This is a new patio, which will replace what is now the sunroom area. We will be reconfiguring the garage so that cars will be coming in directly as opposed to swinging around the back. They'll be coming in from the side. It's again, a three car garage. We are not widening the driveway whatsoever. The driveway stays the same. This little box represents an elevator. The architect can get into that and discuss that further. We plan to add a new sidewalk along the front. The staircase that currently comes to Randall Drive will be coming out. We're proposing a six foot high white privacy fence around the property with a gate entering, you know, and allowing you to enter from the driveway. This.
That would conform to the ordinance as both to and what the requirements would be for a pool, correct?
That is correct. The owner is also looking to put in a childproof safety. I can't, I'm sorry. It's a little warm in here.
Over the pool?
Excuse me?
Was that, you were, you meant to say a safety cover over the pool?
Not a safety cover, a childproof safety fence.
Thank you. Sorry.
Safety fence. We have a pad here for some pool equipment. It's a small pad. It have the pool filter and the heater. And the house overall is actually being reduced in size in total square footage from 7461 square feet to 7281.
So let me, let me highlight that, Nikki, if I may. So in fact, there are three reductions with regards to variances, whether they be existing or whether they, I'm sorry, whether the, the existing variances. You mentioned the first just now, and that is that the size of the home is going from 7461 to 7281. So I'll discuss that more in detail with, with the architect, but we're reducing the size of the home. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then you mentioned in the rear, there was the pad where the pool is now, and that was for the car to have a turnaround. We took out a whole bunch of that. And in fact, we went from 35.9% coverage, which was just this little, a percent over to the new proposed coverage is how much, Nikki?
The new proposed coverage is 31.7.
And we also are reducing the FAR from a 30.2 from a 29.2, but I think it's better for the architect to talk about that. Would you agree?
That's fine. I was going to go through the four.
You can, if you'd like, if you feel comfortable, that's fine.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Let me just get to that sheet. So now we go to the site plan set, which. So now we go to the site plan set, which you all have. I'm referring to sheet one, the cover sheet.
Okay, um, Nikki, since, since you, this is colorized, and I don't believe the versions that we have are colorized. Is that accurate?
I can, I can delete these. This is just me marking it up.
Well, wait, wait, hold on a second, right? This, that's up to you and Mr. First. All I'm saying is that's the extent that this is a document or a plan that is not exactly the same as what the board has, we should mark it as a separate exhibit, unless you want to.
Mr. Simon, that's correct, because there is a, there is a notation here. You'll see in the red where there's a cross-out uh, and a new number. I do not believe that's what the board has. It's not the set that I have, so.
That's true.
So let's, let's mark this. I believe we're at A four. One, two, three sheets.
Okay, can I, can I just ask a quick question? So are you saying that we do not have in our possession, board members do not have the drawings that you're working off of? Is that right?
No, that's not correct, Mr. Togger. It's a mere amendment that you'll see in the screen. You'll see the red print there. That is the only change, as well as the colorization, but you do have all of this in black and white.
Okay, thank you.
So, wait, before you proceed with regard to what's, what we're gonna mark or identify as A four, can you describe what A four consists of with specificity, please?
Yeah, so previously submitted, I apologize if I pull in with my camera, uh, P V, previously submitted by Bowman, uh, was, uh, sheets one through three, uh, what I'll call, uh, the site plan. Um, the site plan, uh, that the board has is the same site plan as the one being presented with two exceptions. One, there is going to be some colorization and highlighting, as you can see there. Uh, and Ms. LaLotus will also note, you'll see red print there, the numbers three, three, eight, three square feet. She will also describe what the change is, and that would be the only other change from what the board has. This would be then submitted as A four sheet one, two, and three.
Um, Ms. LaLotus, can you please identify, um, the date of these plans or their last revision date, please?
These plans are dated, um, June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Have not been revised. I apologize. I was basically taking notes for my presentation on the drawing and forgot to eliminate them before throwing it on the screen. Um, so these were just marked up, you know, a little while ago. It's not, uh, been reissued with a revision date.
Excuse me, Rob, Mr. Simon. If I could, only because, um, the original plans, I mean, I, the plans that we were just showing, show, um, the pool equipment, which I don't, I don't believe that was the originally shown position of that pool equipment. And that spot is not conforming with the ordinance, so they're either gonna have to move it. Because I don't believe a variance was. It's gotta be thirty-six feet off the property line. Or within five feet of the principal structure and in rear yards. So you have a choice between moving it over because it can't be there. It's too close to the property line.
So Ms. David, if I may just understand that, if we put it in the rear yard, thirty-six feet would be impossible, so the only other option would be to have it five feet from the property. Is that what, is that the?
It's gotta be, it's gotta be thirty-six feet off the property line or within five feet of the principal structure and in the rear yard. That position where you're showing it right up against the fence is not conforming. So you'd either have to move it over, um, thirty-six feet, or I don't know that you, you wouldn't have it in the rear yard, so you'd have to put it like behind the house there and either behind that garage addition or, um, you know.
Can it go next to the AC units?
No.
Is it sufficient to say that we will find a location that does conform?
That would be fine, just that would have to come off the plan, because you didn't, that's needs a variance, that's fine.
Thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
So with regards to that.
Before you continue, um, the fence, I see the X is along the right side property line. Um, how far down does that fence come?
To the corner here where it makes the curve of the driveway.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Simon, was that sufficiently marked?
Um, yes, Mr. First, i- it is. You, you may want to have your witness now um, go over the colorized, um, dimensions in your, on, on the zoning table.
Will do. Nikki, before you.
I'm having a big, I'm having a big problem with this case.
Yeah, yeah. I have a, I have an email from Eileen dated July fourteenth that says, please be advised, the applicant for nineteen Randall is going to speak to his original plan since he did not provide his new plan ten days prior. And I, I don't have a new plan. I, I'm sorry, I don't. My plans have pool on the opposite side of the backyard. I, I only have the original plans. I don't know if anyone else is in the same position that I'm in, and I, and I apologize. I looked. I don't think I missed them. But I'm looking at this, I meet, uh, email from Eileen dated July fourteenth, it says the applicant will be using the original plan. Anyone else in a similar position?
Yes, uh, the issue here is that this is really a different application from the one that we had before us. And, uh, I don't think it's fair for the board members to be to, to try to absorb these changes that are suggested by the applicant by different colors on these, uh, drawings. These new drawings were not submitted in time for this meeting. And the problem I'm having is that the drawings that we have don't represent what the applicant is really asking for. And, uh, we're trying to uh, the applicant is trying to introduce the new drawings without actually introducing them. By having the witness state, well, the, the, uh, pool is now on the right side of the property, whereas the board thought it was on the left side. Excuse me, the left side of the property. That's not fair to the board.
Mr. Steinberg, I apologize for that. I was unaware. I was only retained today. Uh, I have texted with my client, and because of the issues presented to the board, I've already recommended, uh, if we could carry the matter so that the board could review what has now been submitted. I know these are up on the website. Uh, my question would be, I would like to not have to renotice, uh, and I would also like to understand if the board would be willing to carry it, uh, what the new date would be so that our professionals and, uh, Mr. Dorfman can properly prepare and be present for that. And I also think we're going back live in the middle of August, right?
We're not going till September.
Thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
And the date in September, Eileen?
Well.
I know there's an August second meeting. I don't know if that one's full. I'm, I'm.
Your, your August meetings.
August second is full, um. I, only because this is almost like hearing the application from the very beginning, you know?
It really is.
So I hate to think it's gonna be even August sixteenth, we have Bacolae, and then one, two, three, potentially. Conan, I don't know, it's gonna take one, two, three, four. We, we could August sixteenth, and I'll, Joe, I'll leave this up. We have, um, Bacolae, which is coming back on the sixteenth. And then I have, um, three residentials. I know we agreed to carry new singular to the second, but we wouldn't carry them to the sixteenth as well, so. If they don't get finished, I mean, I could put them on for the sixteenth. We could restart them.
Okay.
But why is it not gonna be till August, October eighteenth?
Let's, let's make a formal announcement that this matter will be carried to August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one at seven PM. We're, we're gonna be still using Zoom at that point, right, Eileen?
Yes.
At a Zoom meeting uh, with no further notice or publication required.
So, um, can I ask the applicant one question I, I meant to ask?
Hey, hey, Steve, Steve, your, your audio's a little, uh.
Can, can I ask the applicant, uh, a question I meant to ask earlier?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, uh, Mr. uh, Mr. Dorfman, it was, is this going to be your primary residence?
Yes.
And, and do you live in town currently?
I live in Springfield.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay. I assume there will be a new set of documents that will be submitted to Eileen and made available to board members prior to the August sixteenth hearing.
Mr. Steinberg, as I understand it, on July eleventh, nine days ago, a full set was submitted to Ms. Davit. Uh, we appreciate now, I understand that that was not timely. Uh, that set has been uploaded to your website, and that is the one that we would rely upon. Uh, Eileen, do you need me to give you another ten sets of that for the board?
No, I have them. I'll be able to distribute them.
Okay, all right. So that will be what we rely upon, and, uh, uh, very sorry for that oversight on my part. I was not aware of that.
No problem.
With that, I will leave the board for this evening, and I'll see everyone in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Except it's not two weeks.
Unless he has an application with another client in two weeks.
Oh, I have another matter on for August second. Yes, that's what I was referring to, Mr. Steinberg, not this one. This matter is on for August sixteenth. I apologize if I confused anyone, uh, and specifically any member of the public. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we're on to the next matter, are we? Let me get my agenda here. That may be easier said than done.
Next matter is Sherry Potash.
Oh, yes. That's the, that's the matter that has the language that I don't understand. So let's call that matter. Eileen?
They're here.
Will you do me the favor of calling it?
They're here. Sherry Potash, Jonathan Bob, is there anyone else appearing on this matter?
My husband's here as well, so.
I can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
I know you're just very, very
Very good.
Difficult to hear.
Can you raise your volume, ma'am? On your computer?
How is that? Is it better?
No, not really. You're very, very, very soft.
Um, is there anyone else that needs to appear on this matter, other than Mr. Bob?
My husband's gonna try to log in on the iPad just to see if it's louder.
Actually, the way you're talking right now, I think if you, when you sit back, it's so close.
Okay.
Stay up, then you're fine. Do you have anybody else appearing with you, other than Jonathan Bob?
That's not fair.
The architect.
Well, let's swear the witness is.
Okay, Ms. Potash, are you gonna have your husband also testify?
Wear a fold in, just in case.
Sure. What's that?
So I don't know, but swear a fold in, just.
Oh, okay, and so let's do it one at a time. First, Ms. Potash, if you can raise your right hand. You saw me swear from the testimony. You're gonna give tonight's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I did.
Okay, and then what is your name, sir?
Lawrence Potash.
So, Mr. Potash, raise your right hand. You saw me swear from the testimony. You're gonna give tonight's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I would like somebody to address the issue that I raised at the beginning of this meeting.
Swear, swear me in.
Mr. Bob, raise your right hand. You saw me swear from the testimony. You give tonight's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name and address, please, sir.
Uh, Jonathan Bob, twenty Ferris Wheel Drive, Lambertville, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, you wanna explain?
Yeah, I, I apo, I apologize for the language. Um, what I meant by not legal rear yard is that because it's now a through lot, we have two front yards on this property, which was not the situation when the Potashes bought the house. Uh, it came to our attention when we needed to get a new survey prepared for the property, because the old one had some dimensional problems from being copied so many times, and the uh, that engineering company had got out of business and destroyed all their files. So the Potashes hired, uh, Richard Keller at Casey and Keller to do a new, uh, survey for the property, and with that, we found out that their property is a through lot, uh, because of a change to the, uh, to the uh, right-of-way behind them.
So are you saying that you're now, Eileen, are you treating this as a property with two front yards and no rear yard?
That's correct. Is Mr. Keller appearing with you tonight?
He, he, he is not.
He's not, okay, thank you.
M- m- Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of Mr. Bob, please, before we get started?
Sure.
Mr. Bob, do, if you, if you're stating that the right-of-way came into being subsequent to your client's purchase of their home, can you just provide some specificity as to how that came about?
Uh, well, this is when I wish Richard Keller were here. Um, apparently, they did, uh, I, I think it was a subdivision or, uh, a change to the property behind them. And basically, a it's not an extension of the, of the neighbor behind them driveway, but it's a physical extension of the roadway behind them that encompasses about half of their rear pro, to, to about half of their rear property line.
And, and what is there right now? Is there a macadam?
No, behind, behind them, there is actually a four-to-six-foot-high retaining wall that, uh, that goes up to the property behind. We y- yes, there is macadam on that right-of-way for a portion of it.
May I say something, because as far as I know, that right-of-way, that driveway behind me was always there. I had the survey when I bought the house was, I guess, incorrect. I mean, had pointed that out, and I had to get a new survey done, and that's when Mr. Keller said, that's a right-of-way and flat hole lot behind me, so I don't know the technicalities of it, but I think that driveway was always was there, but prior to moving here.
Thank you for that clarification.
Is, is that driveway tall pine lane?
Yeah.
Or is that something else?
The driveway is for a house that has an address on Tall Pine Lane, but it's a flat hole, so it's a long driveway, and then up back is the house.
But the right-of-way is tall pine, it's, it's a tall pine lane right-of-way.
That is correct.
That is not driveway, it's a, it's a road.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think technically, it's part of it's a road, and then the driveway extends off of that.
Right, right, okay.
And the driveway extends onto which, which lot? Or lots?
I have a copy of the survey here, let's see, to lot 65.
Great, thank you.
Eileen, in viewing this matter and determining what relief was required, did you view both of these sides of the property, the front and the back, as front yards?
Yes.
Thank you.
But there's no visibility to my back front yard to anyone but the driveway.
All right, proceed.
Sherri, do you want me to talk?
Yes, please.
Okay, so after coming to the conclusion that we had two front yards and maybe legal rear yard is not determined, I do apologize for that. We proceeded with the correct variances. The homeowners wished to put in, I'm going to say, a moderate to smaller sized swimming pool. It's 32 by 15. The reason for that is, the reason for that size is to meet the setbacks of the property. The property is undersized for the zone. It's 75 feet wide, but it's certainly beyond the, the min- minimum depth of 175 by a small amount. However, it is very front yard heavy because that home was built with a detached garage in front of the house, pushing the property, pushing the rear of the house closer to the rear property line. So we were trying to get in as much pool as we could, meet the 12 foot setbacks for the structure and still keep the, under the total lot coverage, which we are just under. Right now, there is an existing older patio and older retaining walls. We're looking for variance, obviously, for swimming pool in the front yard, fence in the front yard, because if we have a pool, we need a fence. And wall height, there is currently a three and a half foot high retaining wall. We want to reduce that height to two and a half. And I would like to say we could reduce it to two and not need the variance, but I don't want to risk that and create a steep slope situation. The, and the last variance we're looking for is for the filter equipment, which would normally need to be 36 feet from the property line, but that, the property is only 75 feet wide, so that would leave us a three foot wide area literally up against the rear of the house, which is all windows to put the filter equipment. So we're asking for relief to put it on the side of the house where the generator is and where the air conditioning units are and it can, and will be fenced if required separately so that it's not seen by anyone.
So there's no steep slope disturbance associated with this work?
There is no steep slope disturbance. We, we do have a, we do have a slope. It's not a steep slope, but I do not want to recommend just doing a two foot high wall because I'm worried that once I change it, I'm going to create a steep slope. If you understand what I'm saying, because we need to cut.
I do, but I mean, so the existing retaining wall is going to stay right where it is.
If existing retaining wall is staying, which is just retaining the patio at the bottom of the house, that's retaining wall is going to stay there. It's curved right now. It's going to be straightened out.
Yeah, no, I meant the, the real big one, the big one.
Oh, yeah, that's, 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 that's off property. That's, that's the neighbor's retaining wall.
Okay, but that, that's going to, the pool is going to go right up against that.
No, no, the pool, the pool is going to be 12 feet from the property line. And would you like me to pull up the grading plan?
Right.
Yes.
I'm go, I'm going to try this. I am, this is not, this is not what I am best at, so let me give this my best shot and I do apologize. Let me go to.
The contours that you have on that grading plan, the existing contours or the proposed contours?
They are both.
They are both. Okay, thank you.
They're both there and I apologize. I'm looking at, again, this is not my forte.
But you are going to have to flatten the area where the pool is going to go, right?
Correct, and, and, and the pool wall is going to become a, the back, the wall between, the pool wall parallel to the rear property line, that is going to become a raised beam that's going to be two feet high.
Okay, I see.
That's, that's, that's how I'm combating the slope. I would like to, I would like to say I could take the lower wall and make that two feet high, but I really would like to have that six inches to play with so that I don't create steep slope and I don't create any erosion problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there. If anybody wants to see it, I figured out how to do it and I apologize. I am, I am a little bit of a dinosaur when it comes to this stuff. This right here is the retaining wall, that's.
Hey, wait, hold on a second, hold on a second.
I'm sorry.
So what you're showing us, is this identical
to your Potash residence plan? That's the Potash residence grading plan that was submitted.
Okay, and, and what's the date on that plan?
The date on that plan is, let me look for it, I apologize. Okay, now it's giving me a lot of time. Let me, let me slide it over because I can't read the date.
Not dated.
I mean, I, I, I see there's a reference here. The contours are based on site elevations taken by you on December 8th, 2020. But I think, but I believe that's the only date I see on the plan.
Okay, so it was probably dated shortly after, I'm going to, there's no date on the plan. If you want me to tell you a date, I can, I can find out a date and I can affirm that that is the correct date.
We just want to, first of all, we need you to confirm that what we're seeing on the screen right now is precisely what is before the board.
It, it, yes, it is the exact, exact copy of what has been submitted to the board.
And I guess to move things along, we'll let you, based on that representation, we'll let you testify to it, but we're going to ask you to provide, Eileen, with the precise date of this plan.
I, I, I can do that. I just have to, I just have to check a file. But in regards to this back wall of the pool here is the two foot high retaining wall, which we are not asking, obviously, that's two foot high is the maximum that can be. And then this wall here, which is currently a curved wall, is now going to be at three and a half feet tall, is now going to be two and a half feet tall. It's going to be straightened out. The curve is going to be eliminated. New, new paver is installed.
So, Eileen, can I ask you, please, is the only reason why the applicant needs variances other than maybe the pool equipment setback is because they have two front yards?
That's correct.
Okay, so the accessory structure, rear yard, front yard fence and front yard wall height are only because they have two.
I didn't, I didn't catch the end of your question.
The, other than the pool equipment setback, all the other variables.
It's, you're, you're fading.
Going in and out on us.
I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think, Eileen, you've answered my question already. Could I ask the, the architect about the location of the pool equipment? Could you talk to that, please?
Yeah, the, the pool equipment, if you see the cursor, is going on this side of the house for, for several reasons. One, the generator is located right there, which I understand is allowed to be located on the side of the property. The, two of the air conditioning units are over here and this is actually where all the utilities are. It's also, the, the neighbor here's house is 80 feet up the hill. This neighbor here is much closer, so this is the location that is, you know, less, less obvious to a neighbor and less, you know, less obtrusive. The planning on fencing this location here, but a separate fence could be put around the filter.
Well, it, it would probably be a good idea to kind of put some kind of planting around all of that equipment. I noticed when I walked by it during my visit that it's all pretty obvious. But again, I would, I would agree, it's not at all visible to the neighbor to the left who is up a gigantic hill, very steep. But, you know, some kind of plantings around all that equipment would probably be beneficial.
Absolutely. I don't, I don't see that as a problem. Sherri, you, you have no problems with.
I want it pretty, planting.
I want it pretty, okay, very good.
To be more specific, let's say that all those plantings should be A, evergreen and B, at least four feet high above the root ball.
I, I have, I have no problem with that and I don't think Sherri Potash has an issue with that either.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Mr. Bob, how, how, if you know, how close is the house that is on lot 65 from the property line adjacent to the pool?
Honestly, I don't know because you cannot see it at all from their property, no matter where you are on that property. It is set far back.
And it's also screened by heavy vegetation?
Yeah, there, there are plantings. This is the neighbor's existing retaining wall. It goes from about four feet here to six feet plus at this corner. And above that is an evergreen planting. And again, that is all higher than, than our property.
Yeah, Rob, I actually, I was kind of confused.
Hey, Steve, can't hear you. I apologize.
Maybe I need to talk slower, perhaps. Is that better?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I actually, I climbed up on top of that large retaining wall because I was confused by what was up there and the property on, you can't see the, the house on lot 65.
Thank you.
And I, I think if you look at the area map here, you can see the odd shape of that 65 lot. And the house sits back up in here. And this is that, and this is that right of way that causes the two front yards.
And, Mr. Bob, I'm guessing that the, that existing retaining wall that is on lot 65 in Tall Pine Lane prohibits any ability to access your client's property from Tall Pine Lane?
Uh, no, no physical way. Like I said, the wall is four to six foot plus tall.
Thank you.
And with the retaining wall being here and this being the actual edge of the right of way, the driveway is still set back probably here. I mean, the, the right of way is very large, but the driveway is, is a much smaller portion of that right of way.
Thank you.
Are there any other witnesses? Any other questions from board members? Is there anyone in the audience, Eileen, who wants to ask a question of any of the, either of the two witnesses?
I do have one person with their hand raised, so I'll bring them over to see.
Let's make sure they understand that this is the time for questions.
Questions only. Yeah, Mr. Batra, do you have a question? All right, well.
Mr. Bob, can you take the plan off the screen for a second?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. There you go. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm the resident in lot 65. And my only question was, is there any impact to the driveway from what you're proposing to do?
To, to your driveway?
Yes.
Oh, no, no, not, not property.
Mr. Bob, we can't hear you. You just popped it, you just popped out.
Am I back?
Now you're back.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. No, there are absolutely no, no effect to your driveway. The, the retaining wall is well on your property by several to many feet. And they're just doing any work on their property. The only change that would be was there would be a fence along their property line, which would still give between four and eight feet between the fence and, and your retaining wall.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I had.
No problem.
Any other questions from the audience? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a statement in connection with this matter? No, Eileen?
I do not see any. Hold on one second. My screen for some reason is going very slow. No, there's no one with their hand raised.
Okay. Are there board members who would like to be heard on this matter?
Well, I'll, I'll begin. I'm clearly, you can't have a better definition of hardship than what we see here. You know, if it wasn't for the two front yard scenario, they wouldn't be in front of us at all except for the, you know, equipment placement variance. It's certainly, from my perspective, no impact on neighbors to the rear, no impact on the neighbor to the left. There, there could be some impact to the neighbor on the right. That's possible. Although there seems to be a lot of, you know, trees and coverage and, and, you know, things along those lines. So I, I can't imagine that this would fail, the negative criteria. It seems like an awful tight space to be sticking a pool. It seems like an awful tight space to be sticking a pool, in my opinion, but, you know, it doesn't, other than the double front yard, they wouldn't even need an approval or variance at all. So, you know, I, by default, I guess I'm kind of in support of the application.
Steve, I also want to tell you that climbing up retaining walls and falling off them does not give you a cause of action against the township. Do you understand that, don't you?
Mr. Steimer, he needs to seek separate counsel for all matters relating to retaining and all climbing.
That's true. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter?
I'll just add, I completely agree with Steve. I don't think that, you know, you could have a clearer case of a hardship than this property, and we could support this application.
And you do or do not support it?
I do, I do support it.
Is there anyone who would like to make a motion with respect to the requests that have been made by this applicant?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is that Wolfgang?
Wolfgang, second.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Toger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Disco Glenn?
Yes.
Joseph Thunder?
Yes. Okay, next case.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Who is, who's going to appear in this matter?
Am I bringing Rich Keller over?
No.
No, okay, I, I'm getting, he, he's on so many of them, I'm never really sure.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, I know what he's here for, never mind. Okay. So we have John James, who is the architect, and Robert Iamazo, the applicants.
Thank you, and Eileen, my wife is also in the waiting room as well, it should be under Dana Iamazo. If, if you could let her do, thank you.
We have the witnesses sworn.
Yes, let's just wait for Dana, we'll do it all at the same time.
Yep, she's coming in right now. There we are.
Great. Can the three of you raise your right hand, please? Do each solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're going to be giving this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, why don't you, one at a time, state your name, beginning with the applicants?
Robert Iamazo, seventy-five Wellington Avenue, Short Hills, New Jersey.
Dana Iamazo, seventy-five Wellington Avenue, Short Hills, New Jersey.
John James, architect, eleven Inwood Place, Maplewood, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Who's going to testify first?
On behalf of my wife and I, we'll, we'll jump in and then turn this over to, to John. We, we've been residents of Short Hills for sixteen years, sixteen-plus years, and have done several renovations to our home, we live in the Glenwood section. I know several of you, I think, stopped by our home, we were out of town at our weekend home, and have done some work throughout, working with John, obviously all through code, et cetera, bathrooms and kitchens. We are interested to update further our home to solve for a few problems, which would be really around adding an additional bathroom on the second floor, there's only one right now, which would also allow us to create a walk-in closet, since the current closet has a stairway going up to the attic. As charming and wonderful these homes are, they were built a hundred years ago, so perhaps not as pragmatic as our needs now. We had looked to do something quite larger years ago by adding a, a fourth, a fourth bedroom over our garage, and realized that that would be a really large project, et cetera, so we've scaled it down. And when we did that, at the time, we did not need a variance, looking at this, working with John, and now that things have changed, recognize that we do need variances over the last couple of years, given that there are several existing non-conformities due to an undersized lot. What we're looking to do is keeping it over the same footprint, it's minimal, will not have an effect on any of our neighbors, but certainly make a big difference to, to our family by adding, especially that second bathroom on the floor for, for our nine-year-old daughter. And John James will walk you through the full proposal.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Want to give us the benefit of your experience?
I'm a registered architect in New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, have a bachelor in architecture, University of Virginia, masters from Columbia University. I'm a principal in a seven-person firm in Maplewood, New Jersey. All my licenses are active, and I've appeared before this board on numerous occasions.
Your qualifications as an architect are accepted by this board.
Thank you, I'm going to turn on the light here, just to make it a little brighter, so I can see you better, maybe you can see me a little better. I also want to share my screen, and I'm going to show you the drawings and the photographs that are a part of the application that you you all have, that were previously submitted. These are going to be the exact same drawings and the photographs, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. James, just please provide for us the, the last revision date or this, the, the planned date, just so we can follow along.
Okay. It's zoning board of adjustment five-three twenty-two-one. And it's
Thank you.
And it's the photographs that are included in your application packet. So, the difficulty of the Iamazo site, as you can see on the site plan, is the dotted line here shows the buildable area on the property. So, not only do we have the hardship of having an existing non-conforming undersized lot, but it's further complicated with other existing non-conformities on the property that include the building coverage, the lot coverage, the current floor area ratio, the rear yard setback, and the rear yard unoccupied values. So as you can see from my zoning chart, everything that we calculated here on their property is an existing non-conformity, and because of their undersized lot, it's very, very hard to touch this property. So those are the hardships that we're talking about in this case. And what we're simply trying to do is to go from a three-bedroom house with a hall bathroom on the second floor, to change that to stay with the existing three-bedroom house, expand the existing hall bathroom into a master bathroom with a master closet, and to rebuild the existing hall bath adjacent to the hall. So that the existing master bedroom would stay as it is, and we would create a slightly larger master bath for two people, and we would have a true walk-in closet here for the master bedroom. The hallway would be extended so that we could have access to a hall bathroom here that would serve the other two bedrooms in the house. You can see from the existing floor plan, this is the staircase that goes down to the first floor, and if you come through the master closet here and go up this doorway, that's the access staircase that gets you to the attic. So the, and with the window on the center of the front of the house, it's really a very non-functional master bedroom closet. And so we're simply looking to keep the footprint of the existing house and add a small addition at this point on the second floor. And you can see here showing the existing second floor plan, you can see the area, there's the kitchen down below, and that's the area that we're going to add on top of, so it's not an expansion of the footprint. It's not an expansion of any of the side yard setbacks or anything like that, but it is an expansion of the floor area ratio in the house. So we're here tonight, we needed, we need a variance for the allowable floor area ratio. And we're adding an addition of a hundred and sixty square feet, but the variance required is three-point-three percent or a hundred and eighty-seven square feet total, because the existing house is already non-conforming in terms of floor area ratio by twenty-seven square feet. The area that we are proposing is in the center of the property. It's right on an existing one-story portion. You can see the roof will just be extended from the attic roof currently. And then if we look at it in elevation, you can see, here's the current side of the house right here, and the dotted line shows where the one story existing house is, and this shows where we're just going to add the second story on top of that. And when you look at it on the back, it's going to be simply a hall window, the two bathroom windows, and another window in the attic that will match exactly the side window on the side of the house. So we're taking a gable for the top of the house that matches, and we're putting that on the back with this modest extension over top of the existing kitchen. If I show you some photographs, this is what the house looks like now from the front. This shows you the side view of the house, and you can see the one-story portion that's going to get expanded to a two-story portion right there. And if you look at it on the very back of the house, here you can see the one-story area with the kitchen, and this is going to bump out, I think it's a total of six feet, to give you a master bathroom here, a master closet adjacent to it, and we have to rebuild the hall bathroom since we're converting the current hall bathroom to the master bathroom. So we have a three-bedroom, one-bath house on the second floor, and we're going to convert that to three bedrooms with two baths, having a master bath and a hall bath. And that's simply what we're here asking for today. I looked at other houses in the neighborhood along, next to their house at seventy-three, seventy-seven, eighty-one, and eighty-three Wellington. All of these houses have been previously renovated. The Iamazos, as proposed, would be a total of twenty-two-hundred-and-sixty-six square feet. These other four houses range from twenty-four-hundred-and-two square feet to twenty-eight-hundred-and-forty-three square feet. The Iamazos have three bedrooms, one of the other four houses adjacent to them has three bedrooms and four baths at twenty-eight-hundred square feet. Two of the houses have four bedrooms and three or four baths, and the other house has five bedrooms and three and a half baths. So if you're looking at this from a neighborhood point of view, it's well within the metrics of what is in their existing neighborhood. This is one of the neighborhoods where it's almost impossible to touch most of these houses because of the existing non-conformities. And in this case, there isn't a metric that we work on that was not an existing non-conformity. However, the house does fit within the side yard setbacks to its neighbors. The new addition is certainly within the one-story and two-story setbacks in the slope plane, and the overall height of the house, as you can see on our drawings, is only at twenty-four feet, seven inches above the first floor, or approximately twenty-eight feet above grade. And our new addition is less than the main gable for the house. So this really is a very modest addition, it fits well within the middle of the house and the middle of the property. It really has no impact on any of the existing neighborhood, neighbors. And if you walk this block, you will find that there are many other, much, much larger additions than what we're proposing for the Iamazos with this. So we have the difficulty of the undersized lot in all of the existing non-conformities. We did look at another version that could be built over the garage many, many years ago, I would say that was almost fifteen years ago that we looked at that. And in coming back to it at this time, and the zoning changes that have happened since that point of view, we have existing non-conformities that weren't there before, and so we settled on a much smaller scheme that we're bringing to the board today. You know, we have the hardships and the practical difficulties here. The increase in the floor area ratio is minimal, and it is required to kind of bring this house up to the standards within the rest of this neighborhood. Having a master bedroom and, with its own master bath is certainly not a big ask for the Short Hills neighborhood. Our proposal would advance the purposes of the zoning plan, I think the benefits from this strongly outweigh any negative impacts, and we don't believe that there are any negative impacts on any of the neighbors. And so for this reason, we're requesting your approval of the variances. Does anyone have questions about this?
I want to take, you want to take the drawing off the board, please?
I, I have a quick question about the, the drawing.
Sure.
But can you go back to elevation they had? And the top elevation, that's the rear, the gable that you're adding seems closer than in the elevate, or if you look in the elevation below, you're intending your new gable to be lower than the existing, right? The top, the ridge?
Yes, we were, it's, you can see here, it's slightly below it, yeah.
It just seems like it's more in the other, is it closer to the second elevation? It seemed a little different.
I think what happened is that you're not seeing the tonal, because where we put the arrow here is where it is, it's going to be like the back elevation right there. It's going to be slightly lower than the existing, which is twenty, twenty-four feet, seven inches. We're allowed thirty-five feet in this neighborhood, so I mean, we're, we're ten feet under what the height could be.
No, I was just asking, I think it's, it's a good thing it's lower.
Any other questions to this witness? Is there anyone in the audience who has a question for either of the two witnesses? Is there anyone in the audience who has a statement he or she would like to make with respect to this application? I hear none and I see none, close the public portion of the meeting, board members.
Can we take, can we put the plan down, please, Mr. James?
Sure.
I, I would like a very, a very reasonable and well-designed proposal that I think I agree with very much, Mr. James, that it would not in any way affect the neighbors. I think there are multiple hardships, and I, I think it's extremely well-done, and it would be very sensitive.
Anyone else?
I'll say that I, I agree with Joy, I think there's a certain level of inutility to have a three-bedroom house with one bathroom serving all of those bedrooms, and I, I agree that, you know, that this would solve that issue, and it certainly does not seem to be detrimental to neighbors or the public in general, so I would also support it.
I'd like to say I'm, I'm in support of the application, and I'm very jealous as to how beautiful the Inzamano House is. That house is, I mean, everywhere, it's so manicured, I'm, I'm jealous, it's, you, you keep it beautifully.
Thank you.
I'll speak to this matter very briefly. This is one of the easiest cases that I think have come before this board, from my point of view. The impact on the neighbors is nonexistent, and I think that basically everything Mr. James said, I agree with. So is there anyone else who would like to speak to this?
Mr. Chairman, can I just say something, please?
Yes.
Just want to remind the board that the relief that's being requested by the applicant is for a floor area ratio, which is what we know as a Is for a floor area ratio, which is what we know as a D four variance, which requires five affirmative votes. And in assessing a FAR variance, the board's focus is on whether. The site will accommodate the problems associated with the proposed. Use, but with a larger floor area than permitted by the ordinance. As well as satisfying the, the negative criteria. As set forth in section seventy of the municipal land use law that you are all familiar with, thanks.
And what Mr. Simon also said, I think, was that. We now, we, we require five affirmative votes for a D variance.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion, move, move approval.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joey Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Amy Morans?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. We've got five votes and more. So. Good luck on the project and. I think it'll be. Very helpful to the property and to the neighborhood. Okay, we have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I seem to have lost my. Agenda again, there's one more case, isn't there?
MBK Holdings with Gregory Meese is the attorney on that matter. And as soon as you let me know. Who I should bring over, I will do that. A lot of people in here, so.
Thank you, if you could bring over Evan Mayer, Rich Keller and Mark Bigos. I'd appreciate it. Been looking for Rich Keller all night, we finally found him.
There he is.
I'm never looking for Rich Keller, but he always seems to find me.
You want to begin?
Sure, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Greg Meese, attorney for the applicant, MBK Holdings LLC. This is an application to allow for a Jersey Mike's sub shop in an existing shopping center on Morris Turnpike. We're here before the board because the application needs a conditional use variance to permit a fast food restaurant. That is less than one hundred and twenty five feet. To the closest residential property line. The existing building in which the Jersey Mike's is proposed is approximately forty three point eight nine feet to the property line. This is also a variance for the number of parking spaces. There are forty three parking spaces existing on site. Fifty spaces are required for a shopping center. Seventy nine spaces would be required if you count up the component uses of the shopping center. There's also various related to the wall sign graphics. The sign itself complies, but the graphics, the lettering. We think it makes sense to have it a little bit larger to comply with the existing signage in the center. And also a variance to maintain the lack of a loading dock on the property. As indicated, we have three witnesses, Evan Mayer, he's the Jersey Mike's franchisee. Mr. Mayor will review the operations of the facility. Mr. Keller will review the site plan changes. And here the site plan changes amount to corralling. The dumpsters that are on the part, on the property, they're currently in the rear yard. Without any enclosure and the proposal is to add a. Corral on the side of the property where the dumpsters can be, be placed. And then if there's any question with respect to the, the property itself. Mark Bigos, who is a principal of MBK, is here to talk to the board and answer any questions. We have received the review letters from Ms. Callahan. As well as your police and fire department, your forester and your zoning official. We have no objections or issues with any of the comments made by any of your professionals. So if there's no any introductory questions, what I'd like to do is call Mr. Mayor. And have him be sworn.
Do that.
Mr. Mayor, can you please raise your right hand? And you solemn swear from the testimony you're going to give tonight, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Evan Mayer, three, three, eight Curtis Ave, Point Pleasant Beach, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, would you please review your existing affiliation with Jersey Mike's and also some of your history? With the Jersey Mike's sub shop operation?
Sure, I'm an existing franchisee today with the brand. I started in May nineteen ninety eight at the original Jersey Mike's on Trent Nav. I've been with Peter Cancro and the Cancro family since we started really franchising out of our local area here. I held a number of roles from a field consultant to an area director. To the vice president of operations for a number of years. Got two young kids, in the past two years I've decided to settle down. Stop lapping the country, visiting franchisees and start opening some stores of my own.
And Mr. Mayor, how many stores would you say that you're familiar with or you worked, worked on?
I've been in probably eight hundred of our nineteen hundred locations.
So you're fully familiar with the Jersey Mike's operations?
I've seen some, some operations, yes.
Thank you. In this location, you're proposing to occupy an existing space that has a Photoshop in it?
Yes.
And it's approximately one thousand two hundred forty one square feet?
Yes.
Hey, could you please review the, the operations and the, the floor plan for the facility?
I'm sure, so we, we twelve hundred and fifty square feet, very similar in size to the original location we had. We make both hot and cold sandwiches, primarily cold sandwiches and primarily a takeout business setting. You know, roughly eighty five percent of our food is carryout, fifteen percent dine in, the floor plan shows fourteen seats. And that's pretty much it, I hope, I hope some of you have had us in the, in the past.
Now, the floor plan was submitted to the board as part of this application?
Yes.
And the, the access to the Jersey Mike's for customer access. Is that limited to the, the front of the store as well as the front side of the store?
Yes.
Is there any customer access to the rear?
No.
In the rear of the store. Since we are looking for a variance to the closest residential property line, and that's where the closest residential property line is. Are there any, any windows, any glass protrusions into the store?
No.
Is there a drive up facility with a signboard or anything like that, would some of the other fast food restaurants have?
No.
With respect to. Your deliveries. Are those made to the rear of the site, to the front of the site, and what control would you have over deliveries?
We operate off pickup towers where DoorDash Uber and then our own white label delivery, which is DoorDash powered through Jersey Mike's app. They have drivers who walk from their facility, pick up the food and then drive it to the customers.
And how about the delivery of supplies as well as the removal of garbage from the site?
We use Cisco Food Services as well as Pepsi, so two food deliveries. And then dumpsters, depending on location, is either common among other tenants or individual to ourselves.
And what type of control could you have over the timing of those deliveries? With respect to the fact that the facility is adjacent to a residential zone?
Ten AM to nine PM is our standard operation, so typically between eight AM and ten AM would be the deliveries.
All right, are you, at ten AM to nine PM is your standard operations, that's when the facility is open for customers?
Yes, that's right.
And how many employees do you have at your largest shift on the property?
It's typically between four and five team members on at once.
And with respect to the. This property, there is no loading zone. Is it typical for Jersey Mike's to have a loading zone and, and do you feel there's any? Issue if the facility operates without a loading zone?
Typically, we receive orders through the back door. You know, on a hand truck from the Cisco Food Service vendors. We do have some sites across the country that come into the front entry. Based on spatial requirements or other.
It is, it's always like, just to ask a question, is the loading zone required for your operation?
No.
Now, with respect to the sufficiency of parking on site. Does Jersey Mike's have a parking ratio that it likes to have at its facilities?
There is a standard out there for an approval of a site that the Jersey Mike's franchise systems uses as a. Four spaces per one thousand square feet. That's based off of urban development as, as well as mixed use. You know, it varies by location with the number of spaces, the original store on Trent Nav had zero parking spaces, it was on the side of a Arnold Avenue.
And in this location. There were forty three parking spaces provided. Do you feel that's sufficient for the Jersey Mike's use together with the other uses on the property?
I do, I, I believe with the hair salon, cell phone place, mattress firm and I, our day part being heavily trafficked twelve till. One thirty or two during the lunch hour and five thirty or seven during the dinner hour, I don't think that will conflict with the other tenants.
And. I think if you look at the parking ratio of four per thousand. You would have a need for about forty one on this property, is that right?
Yes.
And, and here we're proposing forty three?
Yes.
Now, with respect to your operations. I assume there were, there is no entertainment loud noise that's proposed?
No.
And there's no, there's not a liquor license, there's nothing like that in your facility?
No.
The. I think that's the end of my questions to you, Mr. Mr. Mayor, thank you, are there questions to Mr. Mayor?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Amy, did you have one?
I, I did, but just a quick one, I just wanted to understand for the preparation of, you know, hot sandwiches, what's involved with that?
We, we have a flat top grill, we cook really beef and chicken cheese steaks are the, the food that comes off the grill.
Thanks.
As a follow up to that, is there any frying that's proposed? You have a deep fryer for fresh fries, things like that?
No, we do not use deep fryers. Submarine sandwiches and potato chips.
I have just one question. Would you be amenable to a condition? That loading would be only through the front of the store?
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
And with respect to the cooking of food, is, is there any venting of odors or anything else that comes out of the restaurant?
There is a grill hood that vents the, the heat of the grill and the cheese steaks that we do cook on the flat top grill.
And, and where does that vent out of in this location?
It goes vertically through the roof penetration of the roof.
And that's toward the back of the restaurant effect?
It's, it's, it's probably about fifty percent down the left hand wall when looking at the front door.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Andrew.
Did, did you say that everything will be done through the front door, which means all the supplies, the raw materials that come in will be taken in through the front, is that what the plan is?
We, we can schedule Cisco to arrive between eight and ten AM and that wouldn't be a problem.
But the question was through the front door as opposed to the rear door?
Yes, yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Yes.
For clarification, Mr. Mayor, with regard to the. Dumpster refuse area, is the, is that area shown on the plan? Next to the beauty salon, is that what you're going to be using for your operation?
I believe Rich and Mark are going to speak to that, but the, the plan is to relocate the dumpster area and have that as a common area dumpster area.
And they're, they're going to address via testimony, the, the new location for that? Mr. Keller will address that. Thank you.
Any other questions of this witness?
I have one more question. So when the grease traps are emptied, when those are cleaned out. And that's usually done by a truck with a, you know, that has a. You know, a hose or a pipe that comes from the truck to the grease trap itself, is that done through the rear door or through the front door?
Typically, it's through the rear door, but we could make a request with our, our provider to get an extensive hose that could probably reach up to two hundred feet around the building.
Okay.
Any other questions? Next witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next witness is Rich Keller.
Can I?
Keller to be sworn. Does somebody have a question?
I have on someone from the attendee, Mike Shepherd, who has his hand raised, I don't know if he has a question for.
We'll take questions, we'll take questions at the end.
Okay, perfect.
Everyone in the audience.
Okay.
Mr. Keller, raise your right hand, please, you solemn swear from testimony, you're going to give this evening's truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address, please.
Richard Keller, two fifty eight Main Street, Milburn, New Jersey.
Mr. Keller, I know that the, the board is familiar with your qualifications, but if you would just very, very briefly. Review your licenses and professional qualifications in both the field of engineering as well as land use planning?
Yes, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, licensed since nineteen eighty nine, I hold a bachelor of, of engineering degree. From Rutgers University with a concentration in water resources and environmental engineering. I also am a, I also hold a. Masters in Architecture with a declared concentration in urban planning and design, that is from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. Also taught as an adjunct professor for approximately eleven years. I also, I forgot to mention, I'm a, I've been a licensed planner since nineteen ninety. I provide planning services, planning consulting services as a planner to both the. Township of Long Hill Planning Board, Board of Adjustment and the path to the Caldwell Borough Board of Adjustment. I also provide engineering consulting services to Long Hill. Also both their planning board and Board of Adjustment. I've appeared before this board, the planning board, approximately a hundred boards throughout the state of New Jersey. And my licenses are in good effect.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd offer Mr. Keller as an expert in the field of engineering as well as land use planning.
He's accepted as both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Keller, the site plan which has been submitted to the board, that's been prepared under your supervision and control?
That is correct.
And if you would share your screen just to show the site plan?
Yep. I trust everyone can see the site plan for you?
As a, on the, on the site plan. Could you just state what's the change to the, to the site requiring a site plan application?
Yeah, well, certainly what requires a site plan application is, let me just, let me just double back for one second and. Zoom up on, on a part of the screen. The property is located on the north side of Morris and Essex Turnpike in the B two highway business district. It's two buildings past the terminus of the B three, which is the neighborhood business and the start of the highway business district. We're located on the, on the north side of Morris and Essex Turnpike. And the, the site is a fully developed property. That sits along Morris Avenue, two hundred feet wide by approximately a hundred and seventy four feet deep. And it does back into homes that front on Canterbury Lane, which is in the R six residential zone. So if we go back to the site itself. The, what precipitates the need for site plan approval is when we propose the swap out of the Short Hills photo with the Jersey Mike's. Restaurant operation, there is an increase in the parking demand, there's no change in the building. Footprint, there's no change in the impervious, but when you increase the parking demand, you trigger the need for a site plan approval. When you require site plan approval, it also means you'll need. When you require site plan approval, it also means you'll need to request either provide an environmental impact statement. Or request a waiver therefrom. We are requesting a waiver of the environmental impact statement. Since the site has been fully developed since the mid fifties. The property is occupants about a thirty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-seven square foot property. It's got a an existing ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-six square foot building located. At the at the center of the site. We're not other than the corralling of all the refuse areas, which I'll get to in a moment. There are no other changes, but because we are increasing the parking demand, we need to go for a site plan approval. Also, the fact Jersey Mike's is classified by our ordinance as a fast food restaurant. As a fast food restaurant, that is a permitted conditional use within the B three, somebody B two. Highway District. However, it's a conditional use that has three conditions. We don't meet all the conditions. There's one that we don't meet. And so since we don't meet one of those conditions, we also, in addition to site plan approval. We need an approval of a D three use variance. And then associated with that, we also need two C variances. Those variances being for the number of parking spaces provided. As well as the lack of a loading zone designated loading space on the site. So we need three variances along with site plan and a waiver of the environmental impact statement.
And Mr. Keller, with respect to the. Refuge area currently, the rear of the site is where the dumpsters for the existing uses are located?
Yeah, what I'm going to do is I'm going to share an exhibit, Rob. This will be this will be exhibit A one. What I was showing you was was the site plan that was submitted as part of the the applicant's package. What I'm presenting now, the exhibit A one. It is six annotated site and neighborhood photos for the proposed Jersey Mike's application. All photos were taken by myself today, July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Hold on a second. Rich, you said today's date they were taken?
Today's date, correct.
And they were taken by you?
That's that's correct.
And you'll provide this this package of six photos to Eileen, correct?
Of course, yep.
Thank you.
So if we run quickly through the photos, if we look at the site again, the site being on the north side of. Of Morrison Essex Turnpike, which is also State Highway Route one twenty-four. I'm taking this photo across the street from where Caldwell Place intersects with Morrison Essex Turnpike. You'll see right overhead. There's the new traffic light that was recently placed at the intersection. A traffic light did a number of good things. Actually, it does open up some gaps in the traffic that has made movements. Into and out of some of these commercial sites much easier, although as the township engineer. Indicates in her letter, it one of our driveways is very close to that area. And I'll get to that when when we get to the the engineer's letter. But you can see that the architecture is mid fifties, modern style. Mid-century modern style. It's primarily glass, brick and steel on the front as well as metal panels. And on the side in the back, it's a it's a block building. The if I go to photograph number two, you can see the proposed view of Jersey Mike's tenant space. That is where the Short Hills photo and custom framing will be leaving and Jersey Mike's will be taking that twelve hundred and forty-one square foot space. The next to that is the mattress firm site. Immediately adjacent to that. And then next one over from that, I go to photo number four. Is the T-Mobile site. And then the the last occupant is the Boho Beauty Bar where you can get hair, nails, et cetera, done. The the last photograph is of the rear of the site. This is a there are. I believe nineteen spaces in the back of the property, as indicated, there are no windows on the back. There's no public access to the stores in the back. There's no planned access. This is the door right here that would go into the Jersey Mike's. There's no planned access for that area. There are a number of dumpsters that the individual tenants have in the area. Partially because there's a little bit of a steep slope away from the building into the stormwater collection system. Those dumpsters tend to roll away from the building. They're not screened. They do tend to get left out in the traffic flow, which luckily this parking lot is has been completely underutilized in the past. So they really haven't interfered with the parking. But we thought it was an opportunity to corral those, bring them away from the residential use. You can see there's a a fence that's actually. The four foot. Five inches above the above the curbing. It's about five and a half feet above the pavement. And because the ground is lower on the backside, that fence is about six foot to the neighboring properties that are on the right that front on Canterbury Lane. There's no change to the back proposed. There's no change to landscaping. Landscaping is actually not on our property because there's no room for it. But there's no changes planned at the back, other than that we're taking these dumpsters and we'll be pulling them around to the north side of the building. And creating a a common refuse area where all the tenants can use. Refuse area for both refuse and recycling in in slightly larger dumpsters. The last is the this is the Westerly side of the existing building. There are two. There are two spaces where Boho Beauty Bar parks, and I'll talk about this. There's some striping missing, which I'll get to in a second. But right in this area, that that vent is not a hot vent. It just it takes out some fumes from the nail polish. That may be relocated or removed. Or we're going to set that fifteen by fifteen fifteen by seventeen foot trash area right off that area. There's plenty of room for cars to circumnavigate around it. And the gates would be actually facing towards the front or slightly angled out to the side to allow access. But well hidden by both the wing wall as well as the adjoining building right next to this, to the to the right or the west. Is the recently approved urgent care center that I think went to the planning, oh, that went to the planning board. But it was the old Short Hills Wine Shop that was is now an urgent care center. This is the area where planning on putting those proposed refuse areas. If I if I go over to the I'll stop the share for a second and get back to here. Go back to the share, go back to my site plan, which I think I closed. Sorry about that. So one of the things I wanted to bring up was the so if we look at the plan here, since the question by Mr. Mace. Was was what are we doing? What are the only changes, etc.? What are we doing with the refuse? You can see there's a ten by fifteen screened refuse area on a seventeen by seventeen foot pad. We could actually make this a little bigger if we had to, but we we based upon a size of the dumpsters that was provided and the needs for Jersey Mike's. We thought that a ten by fifteen area would would handle that. If we need to, we can actually expand it slightly. So that will be on the west side of the building. We'll remove the dumpsters along the back of the building and corral them over into a concrete pad. With a fence around it, the fence has privacy slats so that you can't see into the area, gates that face the face towards the road. But because of the proximity of the. Because of the proximity of the adjoining urgent care center and the wing wall, the fact is it's very largely screened from any public view of the roadway. It isn't until you actually stop and look right down that you would see at the back of the building the refuse area. We thought it was a much greater. It was an opportunity to not just address the refuse from Jersey Mike's, but clean up the whole back of that site to be a better neighbor towards the the residence that front on Canterbury. The other than that, there are no proposed changes to the site, other than I'll do one more share, Rob, and that would be. A two.
Yeah, let's just pull it up first.
Yep. You would be an aerial photo.
Okay, and do we have a? Yeah, there we go. So February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty?
Actually, the the date of the the date of the exhibit is July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. It is indicated as an aerial photo. With the image date of the photo is take is February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. And we chose that photograph date because it was just before the pandemic. I had more recent photographs as as recently as as this February, but since we we hadn't gone to the same amount of recovery yet. We wanted to have a photograph that was from pre-pandemic times. And you'll see the neighborhood again as you come down. As you come down Morrison Essex Turnpike, you come past the former Bills Army Navy, which is vacant still. The the. Tire Center. My brother, my brother-in-law works for me. I couldn't think of Mavis Mavis Tire Center. You'll see on the right, on the right side, next to that, next one is the eighteen T-Mobile. These are all all back into Canterbury and Meadowbrook. In the center is the is the proposed site with the Boho Beauty Bar, the T-Mobile, the Mattress Firm, and the proposed Jersey Mike's. There's the urgent care center and then so these two buildings start to be two business district. And the next lot is where the Panera is. Panera is a similar operation, except they actually do a little more. They do more baking of bread, similar no frying, et cetera. In two thousand, they went for the same variance because they are too close to the residences on Birchwood Drive. They don't meet the one hundred and twenty-five foot requirement. So they went for basically the same variance. We're very much analogous to them, except that you can see we are about a quarter of the size that they were. And we have about the same setback of the building to the residential property, and they're a little bit bigger, but not much. We're about forty-three feet. Where's one hundred and twenty-five feet is required. What I wanted to bring this up to show was a couple of things. One is as a function of the site plan approval, the next door. The next door medical care center, urgent care center, they actually deleted these four spots, three spots, because they didn't have a cross season to use our property. So these were removed at the suggestion of the planning board, I believe. On our property, we did have a little confusion. We, you know, one of the one of the downfalls of being a surveying company whose records go back to the eighteen hundreds. We had some old survey information for this property and at the time there were going back maybe fifteen years. There were four stripe spaces in the front. There were two stripe spaces on the left, two stripe spaces on the east. When this owner did some renovation work and cleaned up the front facade. Basically took the pavement, so it no longer ran up right up against the facades, created a nice. Gray paper walkway, fully handicap accessible. They had the the parking lot restriped. Problem is they didn't restripe the four spots in the front and the two on either side, all of which are fully conforming and meet the requirement, the dimensional requirements of the ordinance. But unfortunately, on our drawing, we showed them as existing because they they existed at some point in the past. But they actually were left off the drawing. So the drawing actually shows eight more spaces than currently exist today. They used to exist about ten years ago. And so while we're calling out for forty-three existing spaces, it's actually thirty-five existing. But we're planning on re-stripping and putting those back, so we will go back up to the original forty-three spaces that were on the site. So that was the purpose of that exhibit. And this, by the way, this was a this was this photograph was taken. On February twenty-fourth, pre-pandemic, it's right about the noon hour and you can see that. We looked at an ephemeris and based upon the the angle of the shadows, it's right right around the noon, just after noon hour. On a Monday, and you can see, and this is when February twenty-fourth, all of these same uses were existing in the building. We went back any further, Boho was was vacant, but as of February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, these were the mix of uses. You can see there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven cars, seven cars parked in the lot. There are two storage bins, which were since removed. So you can see that at noon, this this site was fairly underutilized. The lot next door of Panera is is fairly occupied and a lot across the street where Chipotle is, you can see is 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 rather occupied. So this is right around the lunch hour. I I point this out and all because we also have some empirical data that shows that. This isn't given the mix of uses on the site and the fact that we think this there'll be not be a big overlap of the peak usage hours or peak parking demand. We think that this use will work very well with the other three and the and the fact that we need what seems like a large parking variance is not really a large need at all. This site can accommodate the the amount of parking that'll be required at the peak hours generally. Around the lunch hour and again, a peak around four o'clock when school gets out or just before dinner. And then again, Saturday through the morning, especially that time between eleven thirty and and two o'clock. And so we've also done some empirical parking counts out there based on the current usage. It's it's since we've come out of the pandemic, so maybe they might be slightly skewed, but we'll provide that information in a few minutes. But this is really to give a little bit of explanation about why my my site plan, my survey shows. Eight spots that don't exist. They used to exist, and we're going to put them back. If I go back now to my. To my. Site plan. You'll see that. Again, there are actually three conditions associated with this permitted conditional use. One is that the the structure so used needs to be at least one hundred and twenty-five feet from the nearest. Single family of use in a residential zone. And so one hundred and twenty-five feet is required. We're at forty-three point eight nine. There's no change, but that does trigger a D three variance. Drive-up windows are prohibited. We are not proposing one ones doesn't exist. And this only applies when you're on a major collector within the community, which which we are. So there's only one of the conditions of the conditional use that we are seeking a variance from. And that's and that's with the one hundred and twenty-five foot requirement. And I'll get into the proofs for that in a second. With regard to the dimensional aspect to the property, the bulk requirements, the property is fully compliant. There's an existing non-conforming condition as to the existing coverage, both building. So both building coverage and lock coverage, FIR is compliant, building height is compliant. We're not changing the building coverage or the lock coverage, nor is there any chance to, well, we wouldn't remove building, but there's really no chance to remove any lock coverage either. With regard to the parking. In the existing condition, fifty cars are required. There will be forty-three. Right now, there's thirty-five, but there will be forty-three because there were forty-three. That's a we're still deficient. It's an existing non-conforming condition. Seventy-nine cars are required under the most strict interpretation of the ordinance. Again, forty-three are proposed or exist. And loading space, one space is required, none exist, and we're not proposing any. So we need those variances. Just to go over the parking requirements, there's actually two ways you can look at the parking one. And one is actually, you think actually is most applicable. That would be for a multi for a for a shopping center. And for a shopping center, you don't break it down by uses. You just break it down on the side. On the size of the property. If we look at it in terms of the five per thousand, remembering Jersey Mike's only requires four per thousand, but if you look at the five per thousand requirement. Then you would only require a total of fifty cars where forty-three is is proposed. That's based upon all of this space being allocated one per two hundred and the including the the mechanical space for this for the landlord, which is only accessible from the back. If we look at the breakdown by uses for the existing condition, the short hills photo requires six point two. Because one per two hundred, the Jersey Mike's, because our ordinance requires one per thirty-five, that's a much larger requirement. That requires triggers a need for thirty-five point five spaces. So we go from fifty cars required up to seventy-nine cars required. I would point out that. That's really much higher than the than the the demand that's going to be triggered by these four individual uses. And it's actually much higher than any of the empirical sources that we all as engineers and planners look to. The IT, the International Transportation Engineers Manual on Parking Demand, their fifth edition, which is the current edition. Actually, that and the Urban Transportation Institute, who also does recommend in parking ratios. They recommend somewhere one per between one per sixty and one per sixty-two. To one point one between one sixty point two and sixty-six. One for every sixty-two to sixty-six. So it's nearly half of what the our ordinance requires. So the empirical data studying fast food uses in semi-urban and suburban locations across the country. For peak hours, the peak demand is actually nearly half of what our ordinance requires. And so. I think that and I'll also give you some some actual numbers of of the counts we did on the site. But that's the extent of the variance needed. We also need a variance for the sign. The location is is permitted. It's in the front of the building. The wall graphic area is permitted. It's it's actually well under what's what's permitted. It's nearly half of what's created in terms of its overall square footage. However, we have a requirement in the town that the maximum dimension of any sign, and that's that's putting a box around. The limits of the sign and any mounting brackets, et cetera. That can't be higher than twenty-four inches. Well, if you look at the end of this Jersey Mike's sub shop sign. That is actually twenty-four inches. At the center, it gets to be three. At the center, it gets to be th- 3.25 feet, uh, which does violate the two foot requirement. However, the, um, this was done specifically, um, by the applicant at the request of the owner. Because if you remember the, uh, if you remember the, uh, the image I had before of the, uh, of the front of the building, there's that sort of typical, um, a diamond pattern that's, uh, that's evocative of that mid-century modern architectural style that the, uh, that the applicant is looking, the owner is asking Jersey Mike's to replicate so that that, that sign would fit in better. With the proposed, bring that a little bigger. That sign would nestle right into that little notch in the building and it would be roughly the same length as this, um, a little narrower at the ends and a little to- little taller at the top. It's actually deviates, uh, it goes above the, the allowed signage by, I think, seven and a half inches higher in the center and seven and a half inches higher at the bottom. But otherwise, um, it's really, that area is really just taken up by blue background. It's not the actual lettering. Lettering of the Jersey Mike subs is, is well under the two foot maximum. So, uh, we think that the, uh, the, uh, the owner and, uh, and we certainly feel that the, um, aesthetics are advanced, um, by that type of signage. It's a more attractive sign than this typical box. And so we've requested a variance for that, uh, for that signage. So that's, uh, that recaps the, um, why we're before this board and the variance relief requested.
Are there any questions of this witness by board members?
Well, I want to just, I do want to just get into a little bit of the proofs. So if you want me, if I can just jump in real quick with that, Joe, if you'd like.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, with regard to the, uh, the required proofs, um, for a, uh, a D variance of this type. Um, D3 variances, I'll take this down for just a second. Uh, if I have to go back, I'll go back. Um, D3 variances are not like traditional use variances, uh, where the use is completely forbidden within the zone. As a conditional use, um, the municipality has already decided that this use is an appropriate one for the zone. It's a commercial strip, um, but it has to meet certain conditions. And, uh, the, the proofs for this are established in the court case of Coventry Square versus the Westwood Zoning Board of Adjustment, not the Medici case, which is what you might think of for usual use variance, where it's a wholly not permitted use. Um, the positive, and under the positive criteria, the board must find that the use continues to be appropriate at this location despite non-compliance with the conditional use requirements. Um, and so if we focus on the specific deviation, uh, we don't meet the 125 foot requirement where just over 43 is provided. Um, we can't, we can't possibly meet that. It's impossible. Uh, the property is only 175 feet deep. This building has been in this location since the mid 50s. It's a commercial property backing up to the residential properties that actually were developed around it. Um, and we're not proposing any change to that. So it's not possible to accommodate the distance. And so what case law says is, um, the board should look to the, to the specific purposes of the conditional use, the conditions of the conditional use to determine whether the site remains, um, appropriate for this particular site, for this location, or the use remains appropriate for this location. And generally, when we look at restaurant uses, uh, we look at noise, especially, you know, this is, this is for all, all uses. So it's general restaurants, uh, eating and drinking, eating and drinking facilities, as well as, uh, fast food restaurants. And actually, um, uh, retail food establishments, so food, food stores, this all, this all applies, which is generic. So when we look to the purposes of why, uh, why there are three conditions of the conditional use and, and the one specifically we don't meet, um, we, we posit that it's to control noise relative to the residential zone. Um, to make sure that refuse doesn't attract vermin, um, doesn't become a problem in terms of either smell or, um, or, um, any adverse impacts thereof. And then finally, any kind of odor from the cooking, uh, or the refuse area. Um, and certainly we think that despite the fact that we don't, um, meet, um, this 125 foot requirement, um, and I'll be honest with you, with, except for the Kings, I don't know that any, um, I don't know that any building within the, um, within the B3 or B2 zone along Morris Avenue or along Milburn Avenue actually can meet this requirement because they're existing buildings. But, um, the, uh, with the exception of Kings. Um, but in this property, the way that, uh, the, the residents are guarded here is that there's an existing five to six foot fence, six foot on the neighbor's side, a little less on our side, uh, and maybe not all cases six feet, but certainly in a couple of places I measured, it was six feet, um, over the last few days. Um, between the subject property and those properties that, uh, front on Canterbury Lane. The refuse, we thought, um, it would be important that we move that away from the tenants. Even before we are adding a, a food use, actually, I will say, most of the, most of the refuse, because I've looked in those dumpsters, is actually, um, not much, but it's lunch waste. So it's, you're already getting some, some food refuse in the back there. Uh, those by wrangling them and bringing them out to the west side of the building, we think is an improvement. Uh, not only to the site in general, but certainly was more protective of the, uh, joining residential uses. Uh, with regard to odors, um, a state of the art hood and fire suppression system will be installed. This is not a typical restaurant. Uh, it is more similar to the nearby Fara, where food is more assembled when ordered with a little or no cooking. Most sandwiches are not hot. Most sandwiches on their menu, uh, go out, they're basically assembled to order, but they're assembled. Um, there's, uh, um, no deep fryers and there's no open flame cooking. Open flame cooking probably generates the most odors or the heaviest odors of the kind that don't go up in the air, they settle down. Uh, and there's no frying and there's no direct, uh, flame cooking, uh, proposed with this use or any other, uh, Jersey Mike's in the country. Also, there are no early morning hours or no late night hours. There's no drive-through. There's no windows to the rear. There's no employee access. And if Mr. Steinberg hadn't, uh, requested it, I already had, um, told my client that I was going to offer that we would, uh, if the board sought to approve this, we would, we would be happy to make a condition of approval that all, uh, deliveries would go through the front door. Uh, because, uh, they can, they don't open until 10 o'clock. They can control those deliveries so that, um, we don't have to, delivery trucks idling uh, in the back of the property. They can drop off right in front. And by moving the refuse area over to the left side, uh, whether it's a, whether it's a forward lifting, uh, garbage truck or a rear loading garbage truck, they can both basically come off of Morris Avenue, uh, pick up the refuse and not have to circumnavigate around the building, uh, at the hours that they'll come. So we think that, uh, there is certainly, uh, we think that this particular user on this particular site, given this geometry in this building, uh, the permitted fast food restaurant as proposed continues to be an appropriate use for the neighborhood, uh, notwithstanding the deviations of that one sole condition of the conditional use. I'll get to the negative criteria in one second. As indicated, we also need a parking variance. That's a C variance. Um, under, under the most strict application, 43 are provided where 79 are required. Um, as I indicated, um, if we analyze this as a shopping center, which is really what your ordinance kind of sounds like it, it leads to, uh, 50 cars are required or 43 are proposed. But if we look at empirical sources, again, the IT, um, um, well, let me, let me take a step back. The ordinance requires one per 35. That yields, uh, 35.5 or 36 spaces required. Um, the IT would require 20.6 spaces for this use. Um, and the Urban Land Institute, which don't, don't get, uh, confused by the word urban. Um, these are basically all for general urban slash suburban settings. Uh, they would require, uh, one space per 67 square feet, which is 18 and a half spaces. This is actually consistent, uh, with our inspection of a similarly sized Jersey Mike's in Booton. I, I actually, uh, I was down in Point Pleasant not long ago, but the Point Pleasant is a sta- has a standalone parking lot, but the Point Pleasant facility is much, much larger than this. So we went to the Booton, uh, store, which is, uh, similar size, almost exactly this size footprint. Um, it is located on a major collector's, uh, road right off of Route, uh, 287. Um, and it's a very similar, uh, feel, except that one actually shares, uh, a larger parking lot with an AMP. But within its section, it also has a, um, a cell phone company of Verizon. It also has a dry cleaner, it has a bank, and it also has a, uh, a martial arts center. Uh, and at Dunkin' Donuts, it was vacant. But what I was able to do is between the hours of 11:45 and 1:30 on a Saturday, this past Saturday, um, I was able to basically park myself out in front and count the number of user groups that went in. Any, any group that we came in, we just assumed they came, uh, for that use and they took one car. And so, um, during that busiest time, um, there were never more than 12 user groups in that facility, you know, anyone given time. Basically, uh, there was nobody in the facility. At 11:58, someone turned on the faucet and people started arriving. Uh, they arrived pretty quickly and it got up to a maximum of 12 user groups. Um, the amount of stay ranged from about less than three minutes in the parking lot for a, a preorder and pickup. Um, there were two police officers, the only ones I saw that ordered hot sandwiches during that one and a half hour period. Uh, their sandwich took about 15, uh, 14 to 15 minutes before they were back in their cruiser and leaving. Most, uh, most turnaround was about, uh, eight to 10 minutes. So, um, what, and I, what I, one thing I noticed, which was, which was interesting is the more crowded I got, the more quickly, um, that group was able to get people out of the store. It's a very efficiently run operation. Uh, it's highly honed. Um, I also noticed consistent with what Evan Meyer had told us that, um, some of their, uh, employees do take public transportation or bus lines that run down this, this, uh, section of Morrison Essex Turnpike. But also they tend to hire at least a few, uh, high school kids for every shift. And when I was at the Booton facility, um, when I did order my lunch, so I was one of those patrons, uh, and I was still within the, uh, 12 user groups at any given time. A number of the, of the parents were saying hello to the students because they were, uh, rising, rising seniors and they were chatting. So, um, certainly I think that even though there are five, um, employees expected at any given time, knowing that, uh, at least a couple of them are going to be high school students, which you, will, will either walk to the site or get dropped off at the site most likely. Um, it even lowers the parking demand. Um, so the real world parking peak, uh, from what we saw for a similar sized operation would be, uh, 12 use groups or 12 cars plus five employees, which would be 17, um, cars, is the real world requirement during a peak period for a Jersey Mike's franchise. Um, we also studied the available parking, uh, the Morrison Essex Turnpike site during what would be the peak times for Jersey Mike's. We looked at it, uh, last Wednesday and Thursday. And again, we didn't want to look at this two months ago because we thought that we were still affected by the pandemic. I think that a lot of these retail operations are finally getting back into swing. It's the best we could do. Last Wednesday and Thursday between, um, 11:45 and 12, uh, 12:45, there were mo- no more than 12 cars in the lot at any one given time. Mostly there were about six. Uh, that would leave 31 spaces in the parking lot available. This past Friday between 11:45 and 12:45, there were no more than 15 cars in the lot at any one given time. Some short turnover, um, some longer turnover. I noticed, uh, having been also been out there for a couple of hours one day, most of the mattress people, uh, do stay longer, but most of them don't seem to come during the lunch hour. Um, Verizon is a little mixed, a little more on the Saturdays. Um, and clearly the nail salon and beauty salon got busiest in the afternoon, uh, after the rush on, uh, on Friday. But they certainly were busy on Saturday. When we looked at the, uh, the site on this past Saturday, between 11:45 and 12:45, there were still no more than 16 cars in the lot, leaving 27 spaces available. So at any given time empirically, uh, there were at least 27, uh, spaces available. Um, when demand for this user would actually be, uh, the 17 spaces. So, um, we feel that whether you're comparing it to the, uh, the IT data or you're comparing it more importantly to the real world, we think that this use is unique and that its peak times will not conflict with the other users on the site. There's more than adequate, uh, we use Booton as an example, and even if we add a factor of safety of 20%, there's more than enough available adequate parking on this site, um, to, uh, to handle, uh, the Jersey Mike's in this location. Um, lastly, uh, I think I went over the reason for the, uh, for the, for the, uh, sign variance, which is really a C2 variance, where we think it's better aesthetic, um, to go with the slightly larger sign because of the shape. If we tried to size it all down so that, that maximum, uh, from point to point was two feet, the lettering would be too small for Jersey Mike's. It just wouldn't be appropriate, it wouldn't be good signage. So we're asking for that variance there. Um, we, uh, we think the parking clearly cannot be provided on the site because of the location of the existing building and, and the, uh, the layout of the pavement. We think that, uh, we think that certainly the negative criteria is met. We don't think there's any adverse impact on the surrounding neighbors and we don't think there's any, uh, substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and master plan. We think that, uh, this actually is consistent with the master plan. Um, the, uh, the use, um, the purpose of the B3 zone is to provide for, uh, both the continuation of established business as well as promoting investment in new commercial activity to serve community needs, um, as well
Rich, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you. You said B3. Do you mean B2?
I think B2, sorry. Yep. So that's when you cut and paste your old notes into a new, into a new format.
We're paying attention.
Within the, uh, within the B2, but that was the, that was the purpose of the B2 zone was to, uh, um, in the master plan, it specifically states the B2 highway business zone accommodates a large, uh, a number of larger retail, um, strip centers with onsite parking and direct nearby access to regional road system. There are two locations that points out that this is one of the two locations. The portion on Morris Turnpike in the B2 zone consists of relatively large lots, retail box stores or strip centers and large expanses of parking. There are a number of retail vacancies along the stretch of the B2. Um, several offices also appear to be experiencing vacancies. Retail and, as retail and office owners struggle to find tenants, tenants, the township will have to continue to monitor these areas and potentially work with property owners to advance appropriate zoning solutions where necessary. We think that, um, this is a permitted use. We just don't meet one of the conditions. And I think that notwithstanding that deviation, we're still in appropriate use for the zone. Um, where else would you put this kind of zone in the community? We don't want fast food in the downtown. We want them to be out in these kind of areas. And I think that this particular use, the way this franchise is run, the way the conditions they are, they're willing to meet, um, with regard to the front access only, I think protects the neighbors and makes it still an appropriate and permitted use. Um, we think that the, uh, the rest of the variance can, can be approved under C1 and C2, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for this witness from board members?
I, I have two questions.
Yep.
Uh, one is regarding the signage and one is regarding the parking. So in terms of the signage, is all the rest of the retail signage in this center conforming?
I'm going to share my screen again.
What did, okay.
Yeah, I actually, um, they all, in informal, I go back to this, um, an informal survey, um, the T-Mobile appears to be slightly larger than 24 inches.
Well, let me, let me ask it in a different way.
Area requirements.
Okay, let me, let me ask it a different way then. Was, was there any variance required for the other signs in the center? Otherwise they must be conforming, right?
Well, that's the, that's the belief. That's the, you know, I don't know when those signs were put up. If you have an existing sign, um, and you occupy the same square, the same signage your grandfather. So I don't know if any of these were grandfather or not, but they all conform as to the maximum square footage, as do we. The only one that we're requesting a deviation from is the height. I mean, we can go back to a square sign like the existing one of the Mattress Firm and not replicate the, uh, this is actually something that the owner would like to replicate throughout them all. But if we, if we decided to not match the, um, the mid-century kind of, uh, diamond pattern, um, we could easily do a sign that met the requirements.
Okay, so I, I think that answered my question. The second, the second question is regarding the parking. So I completely understand what you said about the different ways to calculate it for a center or an individual basis. And then you also made the point about the tenant mix and the usage. We had a lot of detail about, you know, how many people at what hours. My question isn't about all of that per se. It's about, in the future, should the tenant mix change, which it certainly could, would you have to come before us again for a variance for the parking?
Uh, only, only if, uh, another, uh, food use came in. Um, assuming that was a permitted use, they would not have to come in, um, uh, to this board. They would, uh, they would be able to, I'm assuming what they would do, like, just the same way that Jersey Mike's analyzed the site. They looked at the existing uses, they looked at the requirements for national. And then, uh, because Evan has a little more experience than, than the national requirement, he made a judgment and through studying the site, studying the uses, that, um, they could handle the parking. So I, I suspect that, um, any other user that comes in certainly would do the same thing. So they would look at the Jersey Mike's in full operation, realize how many
So sorry, just to, yeah, sorry, but just to what you said then is that if another use comes in that has the same requirement, whatever, one per whatever usage, there would not be the need to come before us again. But if it were a use that changed that, you would?
No, if, if, if it was another use, the other uses on the site, the Boho Beauty Bar is a retail service and the other two are retail. So assuming that the next tenants were either, were a permitted use, either retail, um, or retail service, and they weren't a conditional use, a conditional food use, they would be able to move right in without having to come back to this board, unless they change something with the, with the building. So, um, accordingly, i- it's only So accordingly, it's only if one of these were to come back as a proposed food use, would they have to come back to this board?
Okay, so maybe this is a question just to confirm with Rob and Eileen then. But basically what, what it is, is that it doesn't change the requirement for the parking unless it's another conditional use? Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for this witness from board members? And even in the audience.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a couple clarification questions to Mr. Keller? So, Mr. Keller, I take it, and this is just regarding the parking, that if it turned out to jump on Amy's, I believe, thought process, that if the parking actually became full, it wouldn't be as if folks would then go and utilize, you know, Canterbury or Clermont for, for parking on the street, correct?
Yeah, there's no physical connection. There's no way for anyone to get to those spaces. So my suspicion is that if, if another user came in, most likely they would generate the demand that's, that's similar to Mattress Firm, T-Mobile or the Beauty Salon. Whether the exact hours arranged or not. If another tenant came in, I don't think the landlord would want to jeopardize the Jersey Mike's. But let's face it, if another user comes in and there's tough parking, people are not going to go to Jersey Mike's. They're going to go across the street to Chipotle or some of the options that are in Springfield and Summit directly across the street. So I think that, you know, it's important that we look at a snapshot in time as to what's there now, recognizing that the biggest potential user of any of these spaces would be food and that food would have to come back to this board because of the, because of the location of the building and that you would have some say in that. But any other permitted use, we've really accounted for in this, in this accommodation. And the only time that Jersey Mike's takes up all the other spaces that are available is only during that, that half hour, really the 15 minute from 12, from 11:59 to 12:15, 12:20, and again at one, actually five to one till about 1:15 is when they rise to that number. Otherwise, once you get to two o'clock, there's never any more than three use groups. So three cars attributed to the Jersey Mike's until you get to that afternoon hour. The afternoon hour is not as big as the lunch hour. So even in the worst case, I think it's going to be adequate parking. And there's no way anyone could possibly use overflow parking, whether it was employees or patrons. There's no way that you can walk out of the Canterbury Lane or Meadowbrook area and get access to the site.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Irene, is there anyone in the audience who has a question?
Yes, I'm going to bring over Mike Shepherd.
Mr. Shepherd, do you understand this is the time for questions only? Not statements.
Understood, sir. But one, one point of order though, I, I have, I have quite a few questions. Should I, should I group my questions based on certain themes and ask them and, and request for a sponsor? Ask everything all at once?
It's up to you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll kind of group the questions then and, and kind of step through. First, just some general questions with regards to compliance with Millburn Township ordinances. The first general question is whether the applicant is familiar with the, the Millburn Township local ordinances as they pertain to noise, odors, waste, road and control and environmental impact. And if the answer is yes, is the applicant committed to complying with these ordinances? A, a, another general question is does the applicant provide training to your employees that cover these local ordinances? And if you can submit a copy of that, that training plan to the public to review. And then sort of the last question in the, in the general bucket of concerns is does Jersey Mike's have a compliance department that monitors compliance of individual stores to local regulations? And, and if so, can we get copies of any complaints received within the last five years?
Yes, that's a good question. But to that. Yeah, absolutely.
Some of those questions are not for this witness.
Mr. Mayor, why don't you answer the question of Mr. Shepherd to the extent you can?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think I, to the couple of different points there, Mr. Shepherd. We, we provide extensive training to all of our operators and team members. It's a nine-week training course. It's where they learn the different things from food safety to the day-to-day habits that we want in all of our stores so that we're good neighbors. They were very much trying to make a big impact on the kids that work for us and teach them good standards of business and work ethic throughout. So absolutely, as far as the food safety items and different noise and cleanliness and just general upkeep of our business from the exterior to the interior. That nine-week course is something that we, it's a requirement of Jersey Mike's franchise systems. Jersey Mike's franchise systems has a standards department that's ran through their operations and training department where they do evaluations every month. To where they have an audit, it's a several-page audit that I, I'm not sure, because it's a franchise document, I can share it publicly, but I could certainly share a copy with you as a neighbor. Or, or those who requested upon approval from them. That check, this goes through again, everything exterior from the, the front parking lot through the back parking lot of the store. So that we're not missing anything. We're keeping the brand standards that the highest they can be held. You know, me personally, just with my background and experience with Jersey Mike's, I want to be a really good community partner. I'm, I'm very fortunate to be where I was when I was at 14 years old. And the Cancro family taught me a lot of really good habits from the perspective of running a restaurant, running a business and being a part of the community. My plan is absolutely to uphold that standard and to represent our brand that, you know, in a way I've been attached to for 23 years here and bring it to the community of Short Hills and Millburn and, and really help provide a great opportunity for the kids in the area and teach them these lessons. The local ordinance policy as far as the Jersey Mike's franchise systems is they are, it's a franchise company, so they're all individually owned and operated. They don't have those standards and documents per town by, by anything and everything within our ability to be a great community partner here.
I, I just wanted to, the one comment I would have is I, my property address is 7 Canterbury Lane. So I'm adjacent to the, the property in question, just, just for, for awareness of the, of the board. Okay, so getting into some of the, the, the specific, specific local ordinances. So noise. Given the, the proximity to my property and my neighbors' properties, what is your plan to comply with the Millburn Township noise ordinance? Will patrons be allowed to eat in or next to their cars that are directly against the, the fence to my property? Especially in that rear of the building that, that abuts those residential homes. Will you monitor patron activity in the rear? And if so, what will you use to monitor that activity? Cameras, noise monitoring devices, et cetera? Will you inform patrons that excessive noises are not permitted? And I think this was already answered relative to the rear of the property. But will entry and exit of patrons be allowed in the side entrance of, of the building? And, and how will that, how will it be enforced that there will be no entry and exit from the rear of the building?
Sure, as far as, you know, the customers eating in their cars and items like that, we can absolutely make them aware. You know, Mr. Bezos, Mark, the landlord, you know, obviously when tenants leave our door, it's part of the, the common parking lot there. I'm sure we can work out a, a way to help monitor and, you know, coach and enforce this with the customers in, in the proper way. So they're still feeling comfortable in our restaurant. The, the rear door is a steel door. It's a, it's a employee-only steel door that won't really be used throughout the day. Even, you know, the food order is coming through the front door. It's not going to look like a common or customer door or doorway. And, you know, I, I think from experiences, I, I wouldn't think that the, the rear, rear parking lot will be used for dining. I mean, I think typically people are going to get in their car and either go back to the office or their houses to consume these subs. Certainly if it becomes a problem, I will absolutely do everything I can in my power to help, you know, control that. But from the, the exterior of the building out of Jersey Mike's space, that's where Mark and I would have to come up with a plan if it does become a problem.
So in, in terms of that, that last point about expectations that that folks will not be consuming, taking out, taking, taking something out from Jersey Mike's and consuming it in the car in the rear of the property. I, I just want to confirm for your testimony that I think it was 85% of patrons order out at, at Jersey Mike's. And, and, and so let me, let me ask a couple of other noise-related questions. And I think some of this was answered, but I, I, I want to, I just want to confirm understanding. So the proposed hours of operations, I think, Mr. Mayor, you said that typically the orders of operation are 10 to 9 PM. And I'm wondering what, what that can do, that qualifier means typically. Are, are you committing to that as the hours of operation for this location? And, and then as an extension of that, you know, how do those typical hours of, of operation or proposed hours of operation conform to the current tenant in that property? And how do those hours of operation conform to the other three tenants in this complex?
I can speak to the Jersey Mike's hours, 10 to 9 is the national standard. I, I say typically, we do have university stores and a couple of stores in downtown Chicago, New York that have extended hours. This location will be 10 AM to 9 PM. That's the game plan. As far as the other tenants, Mark, I'm not sure today the hours of operations for those tenants.
If, wait, wait, hold on. If you, when it's time for you to provide testimony, we'll get you sworn unless, Mr. Chairman, you want this, that a new witness to answer the question, in which case we need to swear them first.
Let's, Mr. Keller, if you know the answer to that question.
I don't know the exact hours. I think there's only one night that they're open past six. I believe that's Thursdays, most of them closed by six, most of them open. The Beauty Salon does open early on, on Saturday. I don't know their normal hours. I would suspect it's probably 10 to six, except for one night of the week for most of those users. So this user would be going later up till 9 PM. Definitely they'd be the only user in the site, with the exception of possible some special holiday hours. Holiday hours for the, for the retail, not, not for, not for the Jersey Mike's.
So on this theme of, of, of hours of operation and, and use of the facility, how many patrons per hour are expected, both, both for, again, for this new establishment as well as the, the, all of the stores in this complex combined? And then what is the expected time stay for each patron? I think, Mr. Mayor, you may have already spoke to some of that.
Rich, I'm not sure. Do you want to take the patrons per hour?
Yeah, I, I actually, we did not do an analysis of parking trip generation for the retail, any of the team, retail, T-Mobile, the mattress firm, or the retail services. We didn't do a trip generation for those to have a good idea of how many patrons per hour. But what we do notice is that they tend to be, not have concentric peaks. So that the Beauty Salon and Jersey Mike's, we anticipate will have a concurrent peak around the noon hour, just before noon on, on Saturday. But most of the rest of the week, they are non-concurrent patterns. And that's based upon our observation from this and other sites. So, but we don't have any hard numbers on how many patrons are going to be there. I think, I, I know Mike, I'm sorry, Evan can probably give some estimates of what they expect in terms of an hourly basis. But again, a lot of these patrons are going to be using the, the front entrance. There's high turnover. And that when somebody comes in, either they've, they've put an order in on the app or online, they're there for about three to four minutes, sometimes less. And then, you know, there is some seating inside. So also, you know, I, I, I guess it's always possible that someone would want to eat in the car, but it seems unlikely because there is some seating inside. And then I've never noticed, certainly at the, at the other fast food places in the area, we've never noticed a preponderance of anyone eating in the cars. Never noticed anybody at the Chipotle. You know, my office goes out to eat everywhere in the downtown and up on Morrison Essex. So I don't know how often it occurs. You can't really stop that. But I think if there's tables inside, it'd be much more congenial to eat at the table inside or to take it back to your office or take it to the park. But I don't have any numbers as to the overall number of trips that would be generated. It's going to be relatively low in terms of the overall impact on Morrison Essex Turnpike. And again, most of the, most of the time, you know, the employees can park in the back, which will leave the, the front available. Most of what you see, including on the exhibit I had, because this is so underparked, the owners park right in the front. It isn't until the Saturday that the Boho puts their car, their, their salon, are people parking the back or on the side. But for the most part, I think once this gets into a higher operation, certainly any of the Jersey Mike's employees could be asked to park in the back. That'll free a few spaces in the front and between the notion of the hours, I'm not even so sure there'd be a lot of patrons that would be driving in the back of this. I think primarily going to use those front spots, back is going to be primarily for employees. And if I know the way my office works, if we drive down there, we're on our way to Jersey Mike's and I see a parking lot full, we're going to go to Chipotle or we're going to go to Wendy's or someplace else. So I don't, I don't anticipate it being a high-volume area in the back. And certainly I expect that Mr. Mr. Mayor would agree to have all of his employees parked in the back of the property.
And Mike, I can speak to the pre-pandemic, we were roughly 15% digital and pickup orders. Post-pandemic, we're now 60% and as a national average. So it, it primarily is people just shooting through that door, picking up their bag and in and out. And I think that's where Rich got the equation from Booton of the in and out traffic we saw on Saturday at the peak day.
So building on that and kind of shifting to deliveries is like another, another area of questions and concern. So there was a reference, Mr. Murray, made to DoorDash and Uber. And I, I had thought I heard you say something to the effect of that's typically through the, the back, the back door, and apologies if I, if I heard you incorrectly. So I did want to, to confirm understanding on that point. And then the other testimony I heard from you was that delivery hours are typically, again, typically 8 to 10 AM. And again, that same question of what, what does typically mean in this context? Is the applicant affirming that deliveries are going to be within those hours? Then just some other questions on top of that. How many deliveries are expected per day? I think you mentioned two. Delivery companies Pepsi and Cisco. Cisco, I believe, delivers through a tractor trailer. So would, would ask you to confirm whether that's the correct assumption. And I, it sounded like there, that the, the, the original testimony was that the deliveries would happen in the rear of the property. But that subsequently there was a mention that that would be a, that delivering in the front would be a condition that would be accepted. And I'd, I'd like to get clarity on that point. And I guess the last question on delivery was, you know, will delivery vehicles be allowed to idle during deliveries in the rear of the building? Kind of related to this, the same, the same theme.
I'm sure. So third-party delivery companies do enter through the front door. That's why we, we place the pickup towers within easy access to that front door. They do not come through the rear. I'm sorry if I misspoke. I, I don't think I said that. But the Cisco trucks, I think with this site, I'm not sure that the, the Cisco food service or Pepsi food service trucks can make the left turn of the rear of the building. So the plan from the initial review of this site would be a, a front door delivery. And both Cisco and Pepsi make one delivery per week that we would schedule with their headquarters to deliver between 8 and 10 AM.
And Mr. Mayor, what, what level of sales is required to make this successful for you? For you?
We count bread, um, but so in an equation where, uh, you know, a hundred bread.
And the question, the question is not in terms of a, a dollar volume, you're not asking, right?
I, I mean, how, how, however, however, Mr. Mayor wants to answer it, I'm open to.
I, I, I don't think it's really an appropriate question to be asking, you know, how much revenue he's going to make in his site.
That, that's fair enough, sir. This, I'm, I'm new to all this, so I, I'm not always sure what's, what's, uh, in bounds and, and out.
I, I thought all your questions so far would have been great. That one just kind of threw me. I wasn't sure what you're asking there.
Mr. Simon, I'd like to make a point of correction on the hours if, uh, need me to be sworn in.
Sure. Is that okay, Mr. Meese?
Sure. Mr. Bigos wants to, wants to speak. Sure. He's the, uh, the property owner.
Right, okay. Uh, so Mr. Bigos, can you raise your right hand, please? You saw me swear from testimony, you're going to give tonight's the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right. Why don't you state your name, address, and then your relationship to the property?
Sure. My name is Mark Biggs, uh, fifty-five Bellevue Avenue Summit in Jersey. And I'm the, uh, owner of the property through an L L C known as MBK Holdings. The question came up about the hours of operation and I wanted order, uh, point of clarification. Two tenants are open until nine P M. And that's mattress firm and T-Mobile. I think it was, it was averred that they close at six, but they are open until nine P M. Monday through Saturday. Uh, also about Mr. Shepherd's concern about the parking lot. You probably know from being a neighbor mind that I run a very tight ship. I don't even tolerate cigarette butts in a parking lot. If I find people are, are throwing butts in the ground, I get right on them. So, uh. Well, I can't guarantee people won't eat in their car. I can tell you, if we find any problems happening with people eating in our car. Wrappers, uh, discard noise, we'll be right on top of it. So I hope that answers that question. It was satisfactory.
Can, can I reframe my question of Mr. Mayor, uh, in, on, on the, the question of, uh, profitability? And, and maybe a way that's more copacetic? Can I attempt to do that?
Yes.
How many customer visits are required to be, to be profitable? Is that, is that a fair, a fair game question to ask?
I think it is. It obviously depends on ticket size, catering, and a, a number of other factors. That's why I, I joke, growing up in this business, we count bread. We need to do about a hundred bread a day. The bread can feed two to three people. I, you know, so, so the equation I, I, I do from the childhood and growing up in, in this business. Is I always count loves of bread and how many people are going to feed off those bread. If that makes sense, two hundred people.
So, uh, moving on to, to, to food waste and attracting, uh, rodents. And, and I promise there's like two, I only have two other categories here. Um, and I appreciate that the patience and, and willingness to, to listen on the part of both the applicant and, and the board. Uh, so. What is the, the, the question on, on rodent based, rodent abased, uh, abatement is what is your plan to comply? With, uh, Milburn Township's, uh, new rodent control ordinance? And what service will you use to comply with this ordinance?
We, we do have a, a, uh, contracted agreement with Terminix for our interior space. Health departments and dumpster facilities have different, uh, requirements that they have, um, plugs and different, uh. Cleaning cycles that need, they need to perform in the larger dumpster facilities.
And, and you know, this, this may be a question perhaps for Mr. Keller, but relative to the new rodent ordinance. That, that passed six fifteen, um, i- is, uh, the applicant confirming it will comply with that new rodent, that, that new ordinance?
I think the applicant has no choice but to comply with, with current health, uh, regulations, whether this board, you know, whether they have to come to this board or not. So, um, this board will be bound, whether it's a, a condition of any approval this board might offer. Or, um, it's not. They'll be bound to meet all municipal regulations and ordinances in the function of their business. As it relates to, uh, rodents, odor, refuse, et cetera. And so certainly, um, I can't see why my client couldn't, um, categorically agree to those. Cause he's going to have to by law anyways. And certainly that would be an enforcement item if, if, though, if they failed in that. Certainly not in the D N A from, from Evan Meyer, since I've known him. But, uh, um, if they failed in any way, and same with Mark Bigos, um, they would be subject to, um, action by code enforcement. And so, um, as, as Mr. Bigos indicated, he runs pretty clean ship out there. And certainly he has to comply and they will comply.
So, uh, the last bucket, um, of questions that I have is around, uh, waste management and refuse. Uh, a- again, sort of the similar theme, what is the plan to comply with Milburn Township's waste ordinance? What service specifically will be used to collect waste? During what hours will, will waste be removed? And I, again, I think several, several of these questions may have been touched on in some of the testimony. Will the, the garbage receptacles be watertight and fly, uh, flyproof? Uh, and will the, the new refuse area be lashed and closed at all times except for loading and unloading?
With regard to the, uh, with regard, again, and anything that's in an ordinance, that's in that ordinance, we, we, we will comply with. The reason that, uh, we wanted to, to provide a screened refuse area. Even outside the ordinance requirements was so that we could keep that area locked and hidden. And so that certainly we don't have a, look. You say you can't always control these companies, but there are competing, uh, waste haulers. And, and I know that they generally, the ones in Milburn, tend to be pretty receptive to whatever the tenant requirements are and the, uh, and the township requirements are. And if, uh, if that hauler can't provide that level of service, uh, Mark Bigos, the owner of the properties can be the first one, if not Evan Meyer. To say we need to find another company. So certainly, uh, they'll be held to that standard of watertight, um, uh, refuse. Bins as well as having the doors closed. You know, wh- when you, uh, if you, if you let somebody, uh, get away with not doing, they won't do it. But if you tell them you're going to go to another company, uh, or you're going to pass any municipal fines out to them, they, they honor it. And they've been, uh, the waste haulers in Milburn have been very receptive in the downtown, at least, um, in meeting the needs of the township. And the individual, uh, property owner. So again, if it's, if it's a municipal standard, whether it's new or not, we'll have to meet it. And, uh, and Mr. Bigos and Mr. Mayor would certainly have to comply with that.
So to the, to the other earlier observation that, um, uh, eighty-five percent of purchases are takeout and that. You know, the, 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 the prospect of folks ordering takeout and, uh, and eating in the parking area. Again, again, right up against that property fence ride, which is kind of a unique, unique feature of this site. How, how will you actively manage littering in the rear of the property? Particularly in that area that is against the residential property fence. Will you perform, um, daily cleanup of trash left by, by patrons in, in the parking lot in the rear?
For, from my team's perspective, absolutely. If we see things in the lot, we'll certainly clean it up. You know, Mark, I think obviously, uh, if, if we as the tenant are, are seeing our, you know, refuse and. Paper on the ground, we're, we're certainly going to not accept that and, and clean it.
And then, um, relative to this, uh, the, the screened refuse area in, in the site plan, uh, in, in the, the, the site plan drawing. Uh, and, and, uh, Mr. Keller, you spoke to us a little bit, that the refuse areas, uh, on the side, uh, near the rear. Where, where that residential property line is. Why is the refuse area not further away from the residential property line? And, and given its proximity, um, you, you know, maybe fifty feet, maybe seven, seventy-five feet. I don't know the direct, the, the, the actual distance from that residential, residential. How can you reasonably assure that there will not be, um, nuisance odors from that. Receptacle area, given it's, it's, it's a real proximity to residential properties?
Well, the, um, the current dumpsters are in the back of the property. So if we tried to screen, even if we left the, um, the other three tenants with their own smaller dumpsters and we put enclosures around them. They would have been, uh, approximately thirty-eight feet from the property line and also interfered with backup out of the cars. So by moving it over to the left side, that the closest part of the, of the concrete is about fifty feet away from the residences. But it's on the side of the building. Geometrically, because that property line angles, I can't bring it much further forward. Because then it starts to impede with traffic, uh, as it comes around. I start to lose that, um, that minimum width aisle. So we moved it as far forward as we could, so we didn't lose the two parking spaces on the left side. And we, um, and we faced the doors away. And again, if you're using, um, code compliant, uh, dumpster or receptacles that are watertight and sealed. And, uh, they're picked up and those gates are closed. I don't think that you're going to have, uh, an issue with either odor or, uh, or runoff. One of the biggest problems we have right now down is the, right in the downtown was the old Charlie Browns. Before they put the, uh, the recycling into the waste into a cover. Water would get into the, into the dumpsters. It would wash out milk products and spell like stale milk. They put a cover over it in that case. Um, we're not proposing that here, but with the use of watertight dumpsters. There'll be no, a rainwater that'll get in and wash out and, and, uh, and flow into the adjoining property. So we've moved it as far away as we could. We obviously don't want to put in the front of the building. But we, we tried to get it as far away as we could geometrically, given the, uh, the angled property line on the left.
With, 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 with due respect to that observation, that there are four dumpsters there today. Uh, that are in the rear and you're, you're consolidating and moving to the side of the property. I- i- is it correct that those current four dumpsters are not food waste? Not, notwithstanding your observation that when you looked in the dumpster, you saw some food waste that they're not.
Yes, they're, they're not designated as food waste receptacles. They're just general receptacles, uh, yard and a half, two and a half yard. Receptacles mostly, each time I go back, I close the tops, um, because they leave them open. But, uh, the, um, uh, that's one of the reasons we thought it was an opportunity. And, and Mark was, uh, enthusiastic about corralling those, getting everyone to use the same sealed dumpster units over on the left side of the building. And as I said, I still have a little room, um, to maneuver. I, if I go any farther forward, I'll lose a parking space. And I, I can, I can make it a couple of feet bigger in other directions and still maintain a traveled way. So if we find that, uh, we do a little study and we find that the, um, we need a slightly larger enclosure, I can do that. We will not make that enclosure any closer to the residential properties, but I can certainly tailor that slightly. I can angle the gate slightly. I can do a number of things within that space. We'll not trigger any need for variance relief. Will not trigger the need to come back to this order, to this, to this board, uh, will not get any closer to the residential units. We can make sure that that area is adequate for the combined usage. But you're correct, notwithstanding what, what actually gets into those dumpsters. That are not designed for food use.
And, and I'm, I'm sorry if this, this was already answered, but what, what was the answer on the hours of a waste removal? I didn't, I didn't, I didn't catch that.
On the hours, what?
Evan, do you know the, the hours where you have your, uh, waste service come to cart away the, uh, the waste from the dumpsters?
It, it's typically, and, and Mike, we, we could work this out with the company, but it's typically during the hours of operation. They're not, you know, um, depending on the setting, they'll, they'll come nine A M. to eleven A M. Pre-lunch hour. Um, most companies, you can get a contact and work those hours out direct by location.
Mr. Shepherd, I've given you a tremendous opportunity here to ask lots of questions. Let's see if there's somebody else in the audience who would like to ask a question.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the opportunity.
You're welcome.
There are three people waiting to ask questions.
Three people? Let's move the next one in.
David Honeysett, you have questions?
Uh, yes, I have a few questions, actually. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. Uh, I'm a resident of Short Hills. I live in ninety-two Meadowbrook Road. Directly impacted by a restaurant that is adjacent to my property line. It's twenty feet behind me. And I have some questions regarding, uh, just logistics. Of how, uh, Jersey Mike's is going to operate and how they want to deal with some, some daily and multiple daily. Uh, aspects of the restaurant business, of which I, I am in the restaurant business. My first question is, uh, you discussed that the, uh, this is for, uh, Mr. Meyer. You discussed that the, the delivery or your primary vendor for deliveries was Cisco. So my first question is, um, these Cisco trucks are very large. They're probably about seventy to ninety feet long. They take up a tremendous amount of space. And how are they going to, uh, be compatible with this very narrow parking lot, both front and back and on all sides? To park and make deliveries?
The Cisco food provider would pull through the front of that lot, and they, they do have multiple sizes of trucks out of Cisco Philadelphia that we work with. If there's a restriction of size, they can likely get the smaller truck into this site.
Um, and then my, uh, my second question is, uh, you discussed that you do cook some. Items on the grill for your hot sandwiches. Are there any odor elimination devices, odor elimination devices which are installing? In your ventilation system to prevent any of those odors from emitting from the restaurant and impacting residents forty feet away?
The, the typical system we use is provided by captive air. Um, and of the nineteen hundred restaurants, it's not typical to put a deodorizer in the venting system. If we're. The answer is we don't typically install the deodorizer in our venting system.
E- even when you're this close to residents? Do you have any of the Jersey Mike's that are this close to residents?
Yes, there's, there's over nineteen hundred and fifty stores nationally, and I, I, I can speak to the original location that was. I, it was in a neighborhood. It was really on the side of a road in the neighborhood. And, uh, they haven't had one in that location, and there's many others across the country that, uh, as well haven't had one.
Okay, and then just speaking to, uh, uh, point that Mr. Shepherd made about your customer volume, which you answered. I think you described it as, so the amount of bread per day. Was the term that you used, and then you went on to describe that, uh, one bread was basically three sandwiches. Is that the estimation?
And one bread is between two and three people, depending on the size of the person. So, so we, we always, and David, you come from restaurants, but we always speak in terms of the giant sized loaf. And when you look at rent factors and other elements of making the business model to debt work, uh, that's what we're, we're looking at is how many bread do we think we can do in a location?
Okay, and your, and your estimation is about, uh, a hundred is what you would imagine at this current location?
I hope more. I, I would think that one hundred mark is the break even for the debt service, uh, ratio. Uh, and rent factor that we would be operating on.
So you're look, you're looking at about two to three hundred sandwiches per day?
One hundred giant loaves, which are typical orders, depending on the, the customer mix, they may be buying two giant loaves per one person. Um, or a single regular size sub, which is a half per person. It depends on the product mix of the location. I would think in this location, we'll see a lot of the community, I hope, and the kids and the families, so we'll be serving two to three giants per bag. Uh, as opposed to just the single white collar type of setting where it'd be more minis and regulars. I think we'll have a mix depending on the day of the week, uh, for the average bread per ticket.
And then you, you discussed that, um, that you would take deliveries of, from your vendors through the front door. And that you would also be amenable to having, uh, used grease extracted from the restaurant through the front door.
We would have to work that out with our grease trap service provider, um, depending on, uh. You know, obviously that side door was the existing door, uh, versus the front door.
And then in terms of, uh, your wet waste, meaning your garbage, which is going to go, that's going to go out the back door, I'm assuming? And then it's going to get walked about a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty feet. The dumpster area?
We'll get one of those totter, two-wheeled, oversized garbage cans that the kids can wheel out and I can wheel out, and everyone can help drag the garbage without, uh, dragging waste.
Okay, so you don't, you don't foresee any circumstance where there's going to be any drippage or wet waste or garbage? In that hundred and twenty to a hundred and, I don't know the exact length of the building, hundred fifty foot walk to the refuse area? to the refuse area?
When when Rich, Mark and I initially discussed the site and everything along with it, I I thought a good solution would be to get that idea going. We use that totter can in my forum, floor and park location and a couple others where you're you're makes it easy on everyone's back and everything else as well.
Right, because the real reason why I'm asking that is because as Mr. Keller pointed out with the dumpsters, that they won't stay next to the building, so they're constantly drifting into the parking lot, which tells me that the pitch of that parking lot is directed directly towards resident property lines. So if there is any
Let me let me interrupt you. That would be incorrect.
That's not correct.
The pitch is down Morris Turnpike. So any role, the the pitch is to the east, it's not to the north. The residences are to the north. The pitch of the parking lot is to the east.
Then then why did the why did the photo show the dumpsters drifting away from the back of the building, which is the north side?
Can I answer that?
Please.
Yeah, basically, there's a line on as shown on our drawing, there's a line of inlets about eight feet off of the building, maybe seven feet off the building. So the pitch is from the building down to those inlets, and from the inlets, it pitches the next 35 feet or so up towards the rear of the of the residences that front on Canterbury Lane. So the the overall pitch is side to side, but the pitch off the building, they do come from those inlets, they rise steeply up against the building, and that's why those dumpsters are rolling away. The area where proposed, and I showed a photograph of that, where proposing the dumpsters is very flat. It's also in the neighborhood of a couple of inlets. So if there was an accident and some 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 wet spillage got out, there's an inlet immediately adjacent to the the system that goes into a subsurface detention system. That's not what we expect will happen, but the overall drainage, there's a there's a 10 inch curve along the the rear of the properties, rear of our property line, is a 10 inch curve, so absolutely no water, no surface water runoff that goes from this property onto any of the other residential properties. It's physically impossible. Doesn't fish that way, and there's a eight to 10 inch curve.
Okay.
Before before we go on to further questions
Yes.
people in the audience, I'm going to tell everybody, it's 10:55 p.m. This board, unlike the planning board, which has a rule that it stops at 10:30, we stop at 11 o'clock. So we've got five minutes left. Is there somebody in the audience who has a question or two that they think they can get over with in five minutes? Because we're obviously not going to conclude this case tonight. Eileen, is there anyone who indicates that they can?
Well, it's the same. Now I have four people who have questions. I mean, I don't, now I have five people that have questions.
All right, well, I'm going to terminate the meeting then at 10:56. And we'll take it up when, Eileen?
I have no idea. Well, all we have left for this is questions and
and comments.
Comments.
And statements.
And statements from the audience. And debate among the board members. I would guess that we've got a minimum of a half an hour left.
Mr. Chairman, if you're if you're going to continue on, then I won't ask any more questions, so some other people can contribute.
That's fine. I'm not going to permit any more questions tonight anyway. We're just waiting for our secretary to determine when she thinks we can terminate this case with about, we need at least a half an hour.
Well, if we do them on August 16th, we could do them first. I don't know.
On August 16th?
We we're going to have heavy agendas till we get out of virtual. Because September is two use variances.
Rob, when is it that you are away?
I I'm going to be away for the August 16th meeting. But I'm going to, I talked to you, I'm going to have somebody cover for me.
I'd really like to put this on for the 16th. Just to keep everything
Can we do that, Rob? Can we bring someone up to date?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm going to make a public announcement now. This matter is going to, this is MBK Holdings LLC, 688 the 700 Morris Turnpike. This case will be continued on the night of August 16th at the zoning board meeting. And I'm going to ask that all of you, if at all possible, I'm talking to board members now. The president, is there anyone who knows now that they're not going to be able to be here on August 16th? Okay, the matter is going to be carried to the night of August 16th at a Zoom meeting of the Millburn Zoning Board of Adjustment. No further notice or publication is required by the applicant. And we'll see all of you back here on August, what is the first night? Two?
Second.
We have a meeting on August 2. We'll see everybody, everyone on the board back here in August 2. And as far as this opportunity is concerned, we'll see you back on the night of August the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hey, we need a motion to adjourn.
Yes, that would be a good idea. So is someone ready to make that motion?
I move adjournment.
I think Wolfgang has moved it. Is there a second?
Second.
Amy seconded it. All in favor, hands up. Opposed? Nobody is opposed. A meeting is now adjourned. See you guys on August 2.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.